Good evening and welcome to the 1,448th Regular Board Meeting held on July 27, 2020. I want to let you know that we did not make any, we did not take any action in closed session. And I will take the roll call for the board, for who's here. So I have Trustee Brown. I see you on here. I believe you're here. Okay, I have Trustee Irvin. Do I see Trustee Irvin on here? Don't see Trustee Irvin. So, Trustee Lopez? I see you down there. I see Trustee Lopez. All right, Trustee Newman? Yes, I see Trustee Newman. Trustee Walker, see Trustee Walker. Vice President West?
Here.
She's here. And Board President Marx is here. So hopefully, we can get Trustee Irvin. Oh, there he is. Just checking, Trustee Irvin, making sure that you're on with us. So just checking all that. Um, all right, now, I will go to our translator services. I'd like to refer anybody who needs translator services to Ms. Paula Valbuena, who is on this virtual conference. Ms. Valbuena, please go ahead.
Thank you, President Marx. Buenas noches. I'm Paula Valbuena. If you need services for Spanish interpretation, please call 1-800-324-7680 and enter the code of access 165982526 plus the number. This is a totally free number. Again, call 1-800-324-7680 and enter the code of access 165982526 plus the number. You can also access these instructions through our website, MCS4Kids.com, going to the upper part of the page by clicking Quick Links and also clicking Board Agenda to see the agenda for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Valbuena. Appreciate that. All right, now, we will have our Moment of Silence. And tonight, I'd just like to dedicate it to praying for health and well-being in our community as we've had a lot of struggles lately. So we're just gonna think about that during our Moment of Silence. Thank you. And I know all of you who have, who know someone who has COVID, it's a struggle right now for them. So we're hoping they recover quickly. All right, we are going to go on to the announcements of Good Evening. And this open session meeting of the Board of Trustees is being livestreamed at the direction of the board. The livestream is available on the district's website, and the recordings will be available for viewing the day after the board meeting. Modesto City Schools' board meetings are closed to the public to follow state guidelines and social distancing until further notice. This action was taken in response to the Governor's Executive Order N2520 and Resolution 1920-17, delegating authority to take necessary action to protect students and staff from the spread of the coronavirus, also known as COVID-19, adopted by Modesto City Schools on March 18, 2020 of this year. Regarding public comment, Modesto City Schools has provided an opportunity for public to provide comment. It is outlined on the agenda. The public has been given an opportunity to call in and leave a voicemail or send us a comment via email address. This practice will continue throughout the time we are conducting virtual meetings. For members of the public that are interested in commenting in the future, we welcome your comments, and we received some for tonight. So I believe we have 15 comments total for tonight's meeting, and so we will be doing that. So, yes, we will. Now, it is A4, time to lead the board in the Pledge of Allegiance. So that is, I had to read that before we did it. That's how it's on there. All right, so please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, whoops, I'll stand over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All right, now, we will go on to Item A5. The Superintendent, Dr. Noguchi, will do welcome and announcements. Superintendent?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you again for your time and anyone who is tuning in tonight. I am very excited at tonight's board presentations, this board meeting. We've got a number of reports and action items that I think really propel us forward as we move forward to opening schools, which is just roughly two weeks away. So, one presentation we have is we're gonna revisit opening schools yet again. I think this is the fourth one you guys have seen in our attempt to trying to keep you guys up to speed with where we're at. Good news is we have a letter of agreement with MTA, and we're working in close partnership with CSEA. And so we want to share with you really the outcome for that, but we think we found, came up with some good compromises that really work to ensure we have a high-quality instructional program for our kids while at the same time recognizing safety and security for our staff. So very happy with that report. The next one is a resolution on ethnic studies. I really believe that what the state is doing relative to their work in supporting, just really the understanding and the teaching of different races and ethnicities in our history. And so I look forward to really just showing support for that work at the, at the state level. And then last, we are bringing to you a framework which we've been working on for the last three months. Really, the purpose of this framework is equity and racial justice. I want to get your input. So give me your feedback, your input. It's in draft phase, it's a draft stage, so where do we want to add, modify, and adjust, tweak a little bit? But I'd love to get your feedback on that. We've taken it out to, I don't know, five or six different groups thus far, and we will continue as we move forward. We just presented it to MTA last week and CSEA. We know that we've got some additional input to get, but would love to get your input. And with that, I'm gonna turn it back over to you, President Marx. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now, we will move on to A6, the Board of Education Members Reports. So I have Vice President West is up first.
I did not attend any meetings, so I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Okay, that's all right. Trustee Lopez?
I haven't attended any meetings. I've been a part of the Latino Emergency Council meetings over the phone, then been sharing the great work that they've been doing around COVID and making sure that we all stay healthy. So I know that I said it many times, but we gotta, gotta stay, stay healthy, stay distant, stay close virtually, but more than, and then wear your mask, wear any, anything that makes you feel comfortable, makes, that's also helping folks stay safe and stay healthy.
That's right, and wash your hands. A lot. That's great. Thank you, Trustee Lopez. Trustee Walker?
Oh, no, I'm in the same spot I've been for four months, still at home, still following every recommendation, much to my dismay.
Okay. Trustee Newman?
I have not been able to attend any meetings, just working and keeping my face covered at work. Thank you.
Trustee Brown?
Yes, I was able to attend the virtual construction meeting last week, and I'm pleased to, just along with that committee, let the public know the great things that are happening this summer. The opportunity that social distancing has provided for work on our campuses has really been used effectively. And our staff has, along with contractors that we're working with, has made great progress. And that continues, and the window is still open. If we find a silver lining, campuses without students are safe places for great work to happen, even though that's not what we hoped would be the case, but great things are happening on our campuses. And if you drive around town, you'll see some beautiful paint jobs, and you'll see parking lots that are improving. You'll see that people are up on the roofs fixing, along with single access points at additional campuses. I just can't, I know if I keep going, I'll miss something important, but lots of great things are happening. And then I do have one other important meeting to report. Cheryl and I were able to go see our little grandson, who has been born with complications and is doing extremely well. He's home and acting like a normal newborn. So we're real happy and excited that he has survived and thrived. So that's my report.
Aw, that's sweet. All right, thank you, Trustee Brown. Trustee Irvin?
Yeah, so a few things. I went by the, a couple of the sites, nutrition sites, and observe, again, some of the great work that's going on in feeding our students and families out in the community there. Also, I attended a couple Zoom meetings on the ethnic studies bill that's being proposed and which we have a resolution before our board there. I was on a Zoom statewide meeting with some of those statewide folks who have been pushing that bill forward, advocating, and then also with some local folks as well, who are also advocating for ethnic studies within the framework of our curriculum as well. Also, attended a community, a community meeting as well. On the call was the superintendent and Mark Herbst about the issues around equity and things like that. So I got a chance to participate in that Zoom call as well. And that's about it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I also had some meetings. I met on July 8 and July 15 with the Northern California and San Joaquin delegates. On the 15th, we had 24 attended because we were also doing the budget and getting an update from CSBA staff on the budget. But we also had a great discussion that what I took from that was, we had one school district that was on there, was Patterson, and they have delayed the school's start date to after Labor Day, which was a really interesting. So we had a, quite a discussion about that because all these 24 different school districts in the Central Valley have been trying to figure out how to navigate. Hang on, I got a little tickle in my throat. I'm gonna take a cough here. So we were navigating what we should do and how we should do that. And so it was just a good discussion on how the different districts are preparing for starting schools. Some of them are starting next week, so August 2 or 3, that Monday, next week, they're starting. So they will have a whole week on us, so we'll find out how they do, and that's mostly in San Joaquin County. So I'll let you know when I hear from them. Then, on the 17th, I listened to the staff, a town hall meeting, and that was great. I got to hear Dr. Noguchi share with the staff on, and answer a lot of questions. I could not believe how many questions people had. They were great questions. So one of the things that I took away from that was just the priority of TK, Kinder, and First Grade, that that's been the priority, and then also foster youth and homeless. But that's our, our main goal, is if we can get them back in a classroom, in a learning environment, that's what we want to do. But we know that we're dependent on how this COVID-19 is impacting and how we can reduce the number of people that are in the hospitals and how it's being contacted by others. So hopefully, we can figure out a really good way to do that and get those numbers down. And then I attended also the Parents Leading Change, Dr. Parker, formerly Dr. Parker meeting. And we had, Mark Herbst gave us an update on what we're gonna hear tonight about the ethnic studies. I'm not ethnic studies, the, some, and justice. I lost it, anyway.
Equity and racial justice. Justice framework, I got you.
I got ethnicity and ethnic studies stuck in my head, and I couldn't get it out. So, anyway, I was really appreciative of the group having input and information. Mr. Herbst did a superb job explaining to the group what the plans are and kind of went through the outline. So I was very pleased that we could do that before this meeting tonight and just be able to get that information out there for the public to know. And especially the Dr. Parker Committee that started in, I believe, 2000, 2001, when we formed that group. So that was a really helpful group to talk to, and I appreciate Jocelyn, who's the president of that group, who's done a great job leading us this year. So that was my report for the meetings that I've had, just quite a few with the Delegate Assembly. We've had a lot going on, and it's kind of, I think all of us appreciate just hearing dialogue from other school districts and what's happening because you don't feel alone. All of us are facing the same struggles, the same problems at the same time. And so just hearing how each other's kind of trying to navigate that has been really good. And I appreciate our district and where we are right now and what our plans are. So that's been great to share that with them. So now, we will move on to our next item, which is our approval of the Consent Agenda. And I would like to know, are there any comments, wait, on Consent Agenda before we vote?
No.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and Trustee Walker? Okay, none from the public? No comments from the public? Looks like I have a hand raised by Trustee Walker, and maybe another one. So go ahead, Trustee Walker.
My comment was, there's a lot in here. If we were in a regular meeting, and a lot of curriculum, and I didn't go through all of it, but I went looking for specifically on the MBA stuff. And I just thought it was worth noting my concerns three or four weeks ago on math, what they were doing compared to what we were doing. And having looked at that outline as the agenda came out, I am pleased to see that they are running a straight traditional algebra, geometry, Algebra II framework. It's not this monkey business of integrated vines, whatever they call it. But it was just encouraging because at some point, those students who want to move out of an MBA back into a traditional classroom.
Be able to.
How would that map up to what we were doing, which was my concern then? Because you can't map a traditional pathway up to an integrated pathway. And so I was just pleased to see that the Florida Virtual stuff matched up with a traditional approach, which aligns with what we're doing as far as distancing in classroom. And I think it also just makes me feel better, somebody who fought really hard to get us back there, that I even have support in Florida that I didn't even know about. Other than that, Godspeed.
That's great. Okay, and then I have Trustee Brown? Are you muted?
I didn't have anything, sorry.
It was on for maybe before. Okay, then I have Trustee West? Did you have a comment?
Well, I had a question. Should I save that? I had two questions.
Are they on consent? Are they for Consent Agenda items?
It's for the Virtual Academy, kind of tagging on what John was saying.
Oh, this, this is the time because we are voting on that. Are we voting on that in consent, aren't we? Yes, so.
I just had, I had two questions. And one was, some of the courses had textbooks listed, and some did not have textbooks. So when there are none listed, who chooses the textbooks? Do the teachers who are teaching it?
Hi, this is Lauren. That's a great question. No, what we've done is we've matched them with our curriculum. So we wouldn't be purchasing new textbooks. They would use ours. For example, if it's ninth grade English and there's no textbooks, I'm just making this example up, but there was no textbook, then they would be using our StudySync to get through it. And you may have noticed also that we made sure that when there was an assignment due, that the book was on our Passport to Literature, et cetera.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And the second question was dealing with world languages. I noticed in the Modesto Virtual Academy, we had only French and Spanish. And at Bayer High School, I believe, we're still offering the German class. So if students have taken one year of German, and they go to the Virtual Academy, and they need that second year of German, how do we bridge that gap?
They, they would not be able to go, they would not be able to take German in that program. They would have to go distance learning.
Okay, thank you.
That's helpful. Thank you. And Trustee Walker, did you raise your hand again?
Yes, only because Trustee West brought up a good point that I was trying to get at in the same question about math. If I understand correctly, then what Ms. Odell just said, since the math courses did not list textbooks, those students in MBA will be using our new Pearson material?
That is correct. They will use our materials.
It's like a double win through the end zone, spike the football, do a dance. Thank you. It just really was my concern, is how we line those things up? Because that's a big deal in how it sets the foundation moving forward, and it just makes that decision just that much more, makes me want to do a little quick dance, but I'm not gonna do that.
All right, thank you. And I just had a, oh, Trustee Brown, did you mean to put your hand up? Yes, okay, this time it is, yes.
Blending a couple of questions and ideas that have come up. So if a student has to go to the distance program for one course, are they able to do that and still stay within the Virtual Academy?
So I wish I would have known all these questions were gonna come up, and we would have had Rachel Barkis here, folks, but I'll try to do the best that I can, and Lauren, you certainly can help. If you are in the MBA, then you're in that full-time. It's not doing it a course at a time. It's either that's your program for the year or up to the semester. If, if you, if we are open and we're able to then move off into brick and mortar, so there's not an, one individual class, that we don't have the opportunity for that. I have to say, it is a heavy lift to get 3,000 kids with teachers. So while I'd love to work to support every nuance there is, the reality is, we've got 3,000 kids looking for teachers for MBA, and that's what we need to focus on at this point.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then my comment, I just appreciate staff helping me get through some of those modules I wasn't able to get into and read. And so I appreciate that because I said, wow, I need to be able to read these and so I can improve it tonight. So we're planning on improving the Virtual Academy, the, yes, Modesto Virtual Academy with the Florida Virtual Academy curriculum.
So what, what, can I make just a comment, President Marx? So what President Marx is alluding to in the Friday Board Communication, there was a link to be able to get into one of those modules, which just kind of, kind of gives you a flavor of what that curriculum looks like. She asked for a specific, what was the module, President Marx?
Life Management Skills.
Right, and so we provided that for you, so you could go back on the Friday Board Communication if you want to take a look at what that looks like. We will open up all the classes to you as soon as we, we are in this massive, you know, move over, move the courses over once they are approved, and then we will give you full access, and you can take a look at whatever courses that you would like to do.
Yeah, that was great. Thank you. And I did, did some math, too, some algebra, and then also some anatomy physiology today. So that was great. I thank Mike Rich for helping me get through that. So thank you. And now, I am ready for a motion from a board member to approve the Consent Agenda. It's been moved by Trustee Walker, seconded by Trustee Newman. All those in favor, please say aye. This is gonna be tough because you don't all have your mics on. You turn your mics on, we're gonna just go aye. I can't see my.
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. So I just want to make sure, did I have Trustee Lopez? Because I can't see you, and Trustee Irvin, did you both vote aye?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. So I believe there's no opposition? Okay, then, we will, motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to Item A8, the approval of the discussion, discussion action items. Do I have a motion? Is there any discussion on discussion action items, that order? Okay, it's all good. So I'll entertain a motion. Okay, Trustee Walker, and then Trustee Brown, second step. All those in favor, if I could see you, it really helps. Could you please raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye, and say aye. Okay, I see all of you, but Mr. Irvin, did you, are you good, Mr. Irvin?
Yeah.
Okay, any opposed? We can't see you. So, okay, any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. All right, moving on to A9, Period for Public Comment. And I believe that we thought one was gonna be on public comment, but I think it's moved to one of the items. So Ms. Noonan, are there any comments for the public, from the public?
No, not general comments, just specific to items. So do you want me to read them as the items come up?
Yes.
Okay, got it, okay.
I will ask you when we get to it, and I'll say, are there any comments, and then you can read those.
So you got it, okay. I'll await your cue. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, on to Item B1, Public Hearing and Approval of Resolution Number 20/21-1, Increasing School Facilities Fees for Inflation in accordance with the determination of the State Allocation Board at its January 22, 2020 meeting. And Mr. Walter Storf will be giving this report.
Actually, I will take that, President Marx. This is Tim Zerly.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, first I have to open, close the meeting, close the public meeting, and now I'm opening the public hearing. Okay, Mr. Zerly?
Thank you, President Marx. Good evening, trustees. This is normally a procedural public hearing and resolution that is held every other year as the State Allocation Board increases, authorizes increases to school facility fees collected for inflation. And as noted by President Marx, on January 22, 2020, the State Allocation Board did set a maximum fee of $4.08 per square foot for residential development and $0.66 per square foot for commercial development. This is an increase, currently is $3.79 per square foot for residential development and $0.61 per square foot for commercial development. Normally, you would see this in the spring. We would have brought this public hearing to you in March. March 30, it was scheduled to be on the agenda. That was our very first virtual meeting, and we were, we did not know how to hold a public hearing virtually, and so that's why it was pulled. Now, we've done some public hearings. We know how to do it, which is why you see this now. So that's the reason, for those of you that are used to seeing this every other year, it didn't happen in the spring, and we're bringing it to you at this point. And we do recommend approval of the resolution increasing our current school facility fees.
You're muted, Cindy.
Sorry, I was moving things around, didn't want to be noisy. Trustee Brown, I see we have a question from Trustee Brown?
Yes, I understand this is responding to a direction from a state committee, but a question for Mr. Zerly, is there any reaction from that committee with the current COVID situation? Any adjustments that we could expect, or is this going to last for two years?
I have not been made aware of any pending adjustments or conversations about adjustments based on the, the current climate of the pandemic. If I, I can research that and respond and get back to you, but I have not heard of any other adjustments than the normal every other year inflationary adjustments.
Thank you.
Trustee Walker?
Thank you, Mr. Zerly. Just one question, because it seems like compared to the old number to this number, would you call this a fairly large move up, even though we're only talking about dollars? Percentage-wise, what you just described seemed larger than what I would expect.
I'm not, I, I'm not, I don't have the inflation rates at, at my fingertips for this particular adjustment. So it is adjusted. So it is adjusted for inflation and as inflation grows, we're allowed to increase the rate proportionately. So that would be my answer to that.
No, I was just curious, it just sort of triggered a thought in my mind because we're making an inflation move, but yet when you look at the economy, we're in an imploding deflation. And so it's a bit conflicted, if that makes sense. So I was just curious what the sort of reasoning behind it was and it just occurred to me when you gave me the rates, that it almost seems like two opposites facing each other. Inflation cross up, but at the same time, you've got a deflation economy going the other direction.
And the only thing I can say on that is it was back in January of 2020. So it was, it was pre-pandemic and the economy was going in a different direction at that point in time.
That makes a lot more sense now, thank you.
Trustee Newman?
Got it. Whoops.
Nope, you're muted now. It went back to mute. Got it.
There it is. So, okay, is there a time limit, Mr. Zerly, on when we could take this action? So basically, as I understand, that this board takes action every two years and we have the authority after they take action to raise it up to that level. We could decide to keep it where it is or we could go somewhere in between, but no higher than that level. That's the authority they've granted us, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So is there a limit in terms of time of when we can act on that? We are in a weird, you know, they took this action in January and now we've got, you know, a number of, a number of, you know, different things in the economy with COVID. So that changes some things for certainly, you know, some landlords, for builders and development. And so is there a time limit when we could work, when we could do this? Or is it imperative we do it now? Or is it, is it something that we could wait on?
No, and which is the reason why this particular public hearing and resolution has been delayed from its normal. There's no timeframe for which we can act, but we cannot increase until we act, if that makes sense. So we can, there's no, that I'm aware of, there's no statutory requirement for us to act within so many days of the action from the State Allocation Board. And, but we cannot begin collecting until a certain amount of days after the board passes the resolution. Is my, is my understanding. If that answers your question. I think we can, I mean, we could delay this action if that's the direction of the board.
And then we wouldn't look at it again until the board, I mean, if we raised it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, we couldn't, we couldn't raise it again until the board takes action, but we could, we could lower it. We have authority to lower it if we did take action in accordance with this board, with the Board of Allocation, is that what it's called?
Yes. State Allocation Board. And then in conjunction with ours, also attached to the agenda and the public hearing is our justification study that allow, basically justifies us to go up to the maximum allowable rate that the State Allocation Board sets. So we, yes, we could go, we could go somewhere in between. It's up to the direction of the board.
Okay, so, well, I have a question on that. Has, how much, do you know what the actual increase was this year? I was trying to find it, I don't see it. I don't know if it went from 350 to 408 and then what it went up the year before. I have found some charts, but they're mostly on the industrial ones. So I was like, wait a minute, I can't find it. So if you could find that maybe in the meantime and let us know or see. I just wanted to find out how much it's gone up this year or that they're asking us to increase it because it is, we are living in really difficult times, so.
It's our current, our current rate that we collect for a residential development is $3.79 a square foot. Where this action would raise it to $4.08 a square foot.
So like 30.
Which is the maximum amount that under this particular fee collection we could collect.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for that. All right, Mr. Trustee Brown. Did we answer your questions, Trustee Newman? Did you have any more? Okay, Trustee Brown?
While we've expressed some concern about the pandemic and the deflationary economy, the cost of housing, the development is booming right now. Prices are rising and the forecast for the immediate future is for that to continue because our availability is so tight. So I have no problem from the, from that perspective, recommending that we move forward with this.
And this is only taxed upon the developers or the new housing? This is not an increase in the taxes for the current homes, is that correct?
Unless a current homeowner decides to add livable square footage to their home. Yes, that would be the only other case. And as Trustee Brown points out, those developments that are currently building or selling, they are all in CFDs, Community Facility Districts, and so they are not part of this, this particular fee collection.
Right, because that's done by a different formula. So thank you, that's great. Okay, so are there any other questions or comments? And are there any comments on this item from the public?
There are not, no, there are not.
There are not, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to make sure. Okay. That's fine. All right, so now I will entertain a motion.
A hearing.
We have to close the public hearing, I believe.
Ah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Closing public hearing, opening the public meeting. Now I'm ready to entertain a motion, got a tickle in my throat.
Move.
Moved by Trustee Walker, seconded. Trustee Irvin?
Irvin.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, it passes unanimously. Okay, hang on, I got a cough.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, got allergies this time of the year and so we'll see how we do here. And I will get a cough drop if my eyes keep watering. So we will move on to item. All right. Item B2, report on distance online learning model. Is this going to be Mr. Goodow?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right, you're up.
Thank you, President Marx. Trustee Superintendent Dr. Naguchi, it's my pleasure this evening to be joined by Associate Superintendent Mark Herbst and Associate Superintendent Dr. Lauren Odell to review and provide you a report on the Modesto City Schools' distance learning model. We're going to talk about the letter of agreement that we entered into with our labor partners, Modesto Teachers Association last week, as well as discuss some of the supports that are being provided to staff via CIPD, as well as some of the mandates and regulations that we are following for, to support our English learners. So our goal alignment, of course, this is very highly centered around academic achievement and instruction. So we've got goal one there, increasing academic achievement and equitable access, something that we're working very diligently here, particularly in the next two weeks.
You're not, you're not sharing your PowerPoint.
Okay. That's interesting, my apologies. We'll go with.
Mr. Goodow, I was very impressed with the presentation thus far.
Game on. Game on, thank you, thank you, Mr. Herbst. So, yes, back to the presentation. Goal one, increasing academic achievement, equitable access. Of course, goal two, working with our employees for professional development. You're going to hear about that this evening, as well as goal three, providing a safe, welcoming and respectful learning environment for all members of our community. So the foundation of the distance learning letter of agreement with Modesto Teachers Association outlines which teachers are reporting for work. And there are a few exceptions. All teachers are expected to report to the school site except for teachers that choose to go through the interactive process to address any medical conditions or high-risk conditions that they might have, as well as certificated staff that have children zero to 12 years that are having issues around childcare, et cetera. So they were going to, they will work through human resources to address that and then we will work with the sites to work out the details. We have accountability for work expectations. I know that was a big concern for all of us, for our community, for our parents, for our students, for our teachers and for the board around the expectations for what distance learning will look like versus what it looked like last spring. And we do have accountability in there, i.e., students will be given grades. We've got some very regimented schedules about when instruction will take place and you'll see more about that when we go through the daily instructional schedule. And also outlined in the LOA is the idea that materials and internet access are the responsibility of the employee if they are working from home and not from their classroom or the school site. So starting with TK6, distance learning parameters, all of our elementary school sites will be following the same daily instructional schedule. They'll start each day with a morning meeting with their students lasting anywhere from five to 15 minutes, really just checking in with students, that social emotional check before they get into the meat of the instructional day. We talked last week, at last week's board meeting, about the state minimum requirements for daily instructional minutes. Here, these are the LOA direct instruction minimums, meaning at TKK, I want to say, it was 190, 180 instructional minutes per day, but this is 90 minutes of direct instruction, meaning that the teachers will be providing live, engaged, direct instruction for 90 of those minutes each day. Similarly, at grades one through three and four through six, they will also be doing direct instruction for that minimum amount of time. Okay, the instructional schedule for TK6, you can see each day is outlined there. I will point out that the ELA block and the math block are interchangeable for sites depending on any number of different factors that might need to create schedules that would support itinerant staff or special educators that are supporting specific students at school sites. So we've got some flexibility there, but generally the schedule will hold true throughout the day. So you'll get direct instruction through the ELA block. There's a break there for students and for staff, you know, the digital fatigue, having that break in there, moving into the block of math. And then having that hour lunch, that was an area that came up last board meeting about do we have enough time? And we did adjust that this past week. And so we've expanded that to an hour as well as, and so then that just kind of pushed everything into the afternoon. And language and writing will take place from 12:30 to 1:00 and then we've got a, pardon me, we've got a 90-minute block where these other activities will be taking place. Our nutrition services, we finalized the plan last week. So curbside meal pickup locations at 20 sites. And I'll go over the slide that will list those sites here in a moment. So bear with me. All of the meal locations will be open for pickup between 10:35 and 12:30. And I think we talked about this last week. We do have that two-hour window that if parents need to go down or maybe there is a neighborhood, you know, the community mall that's going to help out with some other homes in the area or the neighborhood. If they have the students' meal information, their barcoded card or information, they would be able to go down, let's say, and pick up five or six student lunches to get them back. So that would start at 10:35. However, students can walk down anywhere between that meal time of 11:30 to 12:30. So we've got some overlapping meal service time there. And regardless of what school they attend, meal pickups can be done at any of those locations. So students and parents will need to have a barcoded ID card, unique to each student. Nutrition Services is mailing out information to all families prior to the start of school that will outline this process. This is different than the summer feeding program in which students or families could show up to get meals and they did not have to provide the barcoded or specific information. So we are going to communicate that out, that they do need to be prepared to share that specific information for students. And that our nutrition services staff is, they're bobbing and weaving and they're creating what they need to for these distribution sites, which is going to require utilization of cafeterias and multipurpose rooms for meal preparation on a daily basis. So as I mentioned, these are the 20 sites that will be functioning as curbside meal pickup locations. You'll notice that the schools, written in red, those are new sites being added from the summer meal locations. And at Wright, Orbital Wright, we do have some construction going on in that area. So we are going to continue to use George Rogers Park, which is adjacent to Orbital Wright while that roadwork is underway. So at this point, I am going to turn it over to Mr. Herbst to take it.
Why, thank you, Brad, I appreciate that. Brad kind of touched on the direct instructional minutes, but despite those minutes that he mentioned, the TK6 teachers still provide support outside their minimum minutes of direct instruction. So this can come in a variety of different forms. It can include individual and small group supports. It can also include monitoring independent practice. So they're still engaged in working with the students. Teachers also, as a result of the MOU, they have to establish office hours under the guise of communicating with their families. This is going to give the opportunity for parents to pose questions and get assistance on their distance learning. So vital piece in order to make sure that we're responsive to parent and family needs. Mr. Goodow, next slide, please. Wednesdays have that slightly different schedule based on what Mr. Goodow had showed you. That schedule, which isn't as regimented as the others, still engages our teachers with our students in being able to provide individual targeted small group and in some cases, individual instruction, check-ins, assessments, and additional feedback on how kids can access or better access their distance learning experience. This will also be an opportunity for them to attend IEPs, et cetera. So there's definitely still some merit behind what occurs on Wednesday.
Okay.
There's a couple other highlights that I want to talk about. English language development, that regimented schedule that we need to provide our English language learners, that's going to be provided in the language and writing block that you saw on the schedule that you guys have. So that's going to ensure that our English language learners are getting that ELD. Brad had touched on it before, so I don't want to be repetitive, but a principal with the support of their leadership team can switch the math and ELA blocks, which could assist potentially in scheduling. During the 1:00 to 2:30 block, teachers will still engage with students in either individual meetings. It is an opportunity for them to assign independent work, potential physical education and/or enrichment activities. So that'll occur during the 1:00 to 2:30 block.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Herbst. At 7:12, we do have some other distance learning parameters, recognizing that the block schedule, which we'll see here in a moment, are 80 minutes in length. A minimum of 30 minutes of those 80 minutes each period must include 30 minutes of direct instruction. Support will be provided during the additional class period or during the additional class time, individual or group. Similar to our elementary sites, we will have set virtual office hours for teachers each week, one hour per week. And on Wednesdays, you'll see a similar layout relative to the schedule on Wednesdays where we will be able to do small group individual sessions as well as collaboration. So here you can see the junior high and high school daily instructional schedule. The zero and eight periods will start at 7:50. And then we've got first, second, and third on Mondays. And then you can see the layout on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. Wednesdays again is the more flexible. Wednesdays, again, is the more flexibility in how we're providing the supports, as well as collaboration. Important to note here is that on Wednesdays, we have a rotating homeroom meeting. At the elementary level, at TK6, we've got that morning meeting every day of the week. At our junior highs and high schools, they will actually have an assigned homeroom, which will function as a check-in, as well as providing any number of different supports and announcements, information for students. Again, you can also see that we have office hours outlined in the schedule. So here you can see the rotating homeroom schedule so that any one particular teacher or period doesn't have the homeroom all year long. It will work on a rotating basis. So in the month of August, first period will function as the homeroom. So every first-period teacher, their roster for first period, that's where they'll be for homeroom, and we'll rotate that through January and so on and so forth through the end of the year. On every Wednesday, one of the drawbacks of the, kind of the lack of scheduling in the spring, and we wanted to avoid that on Wednesdays in this model, was the idea that teachers wouldn't schedule or overlap their supports for students. So here we have the framework for teachers to provide specific blocks of time during the Wednesday group time for specific content areas. As far as the digital learning platforms, we do have some agreements. That Schoology will be the primary learning management system. We will focus our efforts through Schoology, Microsoft Teams, and Power School. We do recognize that there may be times in which, you know, our lead learners, our teachers out there might have need to use additional supports or platforms. And we do have the opportunity to evaluate those and approve those as an as-needed basis. And then also, we still have in the LOA, which we had in the spring, the idea that everybody has to check their email a minimum of twice daily to ensure that we're getting effective communication across the school site.
Let me kind of roll into the agreement that we have on the special education front. Generally, the overwhelming majority of special educators are teachers of record. So they will follow, in essence, the same schedule, obviously with a modified curriculum, but with the same expectations that we have for the general education teachers. The itinerant staff, the staff that may not be teachers of record, will continue to support our students through distance learning. That can include teletherapy, where practical, i.e. our speech therapists engaging in speech therapy over through a device. That's just one example. And/or parent training. Something that's new, we did come to an agreement on one-to-one assessments. One-to-one assessments are those assessments special educators have to provide as part of a three-year update or an initial evaluation to determine eligibility. Last year, in-person assessments were suspended. That is not the case this year. So students will actually be going into our school sites on an appointment basis to receive their required assessments. And obviously, we'll take proper safety protocol to make sure that we have some things in place to ensure the safety of our students and our staff. Mr. Goodo, next slide. Another key component of the LOA was the updated distance learning plans that will occur within the first 45 days of school and added to the IEP document. As a result of the pandemic and distance learning, California required that staff engage and create what's called distance learning plans with families. This outlines the agreement on what goals and objectives and services will be targeted during distance learning. Special education teachers will also complete a log of contacts and registers to ensure that we document the services that we provide. We also came to agreement on a number of vital teachers who may not be teachers of record. I'm just going to give you example counselors, coaches, intervention center teachers, I apologize for the abbreviation. But on top of their relevant duties that are on their job descriptions, we're going to have the counselors, and actually, the psychologists too, man the social-emotional hotline a minimum of two hours per week. Intervention center teachers are going to focus on issues surrounding equity and ensuring that our students are logging in and getting the support we need them to get. The multi-tiered system of support coaches will assist with our teachers with distance learning and work with the curriculum and instruction professional development office to that end. The computer literacy teachers will assist with distance learning also at the same, kind of be that point of contact at each one of our elementary sites to ensure that the teachers who don't have as much experience get some experience and some expertise. The prep providers at the K6 level will work on social-emotional character lessons that they can deliver to the teachers so that they could use those in their 15-minute check-ins or at various times throughout the day. And then the instructional coaches and coordinators, I talked about the MTSS coaches, but I believe Dr. Odell is going to talk about her plan on how she wants to use the other coaches and coordinators in a later slide. We also came to agreement on health and safety elements. This includes regular cleaning of workspaces, PPE made available to those teachers who do not opt to bring in their own, obviously, the enforcement of social distancing requirement, hand sanitizer in every class, health sanitizers, and then being familiar with the site and district expectations regarding safety is. It's also important to note, though, however, that we are not currently in a lockdown situation. I'm sorry, I'm not using the right term on lockdown, but individuals still can come onto our campuses. And so as long as we stay in the same situation we're in right now, we will allow students to attend on campus through appointments so that various activities can occur. Again, keeping in mind all health and safety protocols and standards.
Okay, so for substitutes, we did come to the agreement that we're going to follow all of our established call-in procedures for substitutes. So if a, for example, if a teacher is gone through the interactive process at HR, and they're working remotely from home, then they would still need to call in if they were going to be sick. They can't just, you know, send out a message to students and say, hey, everybody, just do this today, and I'll check in with you tomorrow. There still will be a substitute and a lesson plan required to engage in that work with the students for the day. Subs will get the video conferencing links that they need to engage with those students. Of concern was the idea that employees might be asked to share usernames and passwords to facilitate getting in and out of platforms, and that's obviously a big no-no. So that is outlined in the LOA as well. And we're working to provide the training that our substitutes are going to need in order to access those platforms, as well as when they check in at school sites, they'll receive a computer to get that work done for the day. And like I just mentioned, they will be, subs will be reporting to the school site to engage in the substitute teaching responsibilities. So stipends are outlined. Any and all stipends are dependent on principal approval. Really, it's this idea that, you know, the work has to be able to be done before we look at whether or not those stipends are going to be paid. So that's going to be an ongoing conversation throughout the school year for any number of different subs, or, excuse me, stipends. I think oftentimes, we associate stipends with coaching positions, but we also have any number of co- and extracurricular activities from mock trial to science olympiad to yearbook and cheer, and any number of different things that teachers engage in. The idea of being here is we don't want to get super restrictive. We want to create opportunities for staff to connect with students. As I mentioned last week, that is a critical area, particularly when we are in distance learning, that we're still connecting with students. So we'll take those on a case-by-case basis. And then professional development through and with curriculum instruction, professional development. We have stated that, to the extent possible, basically, everything that we're doing with staff is going to be online, unless there is an absolute necessity to bring people together physically present in rooms. And if we did that, we are going to employ all of the different requirements of social distancing, appropriate, you know, everybody in a face mask, hand sanitizer, all that. But the message here is, is everything is virtual unless we, there is a definite need to bring folks together. So as Mr. Herbst mentioned, that we are not currently in shelter in place, but it's also important that we're preparing for the possibility. It's not outside the realm of possibility, particularly in our area and our county, where we have an uptick in COVID-positive cases. So we are communicating with sites around getting their staff ready in case we get to that spot. The district will communicate out to our school community in the case of a shelter in place where employees, right now, in distance learning would not report to work in shelter in place. Sites would communicate then to staff and students, hey, this is what that looks like. The idea being here that we want a seamless transition. If Monday, we're in distance learning, and the county officer comes on and announces, or the governor announces we're in shelter in place Tuesday, we will start and flow seamlessly into distance learning through that different work environment. So we're making those arrangements at the school site and that planning, namely, you know, making sure that staff have what they need when they leave at the end of the day to continue their work. And how, again, like we did in the spring, how would we communicate and, you know, transfer phones? And who's going to answer what lines, those kinds of things? Again, the goal here is a seamless transition. So with that, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Odell.
Well, thank you, Brad. I get the pleasure of sharing with you, following Mr. Herbst and Mr. Goodo on what curriculum and instruction and professional development is doing to support this distance learning, this time where we aren't allowed to bring our students back. So we've got quite a bit of work going on, as you can well imagine, with our TK12 distance learning teacher supports. That includes, we're going to continue to coach teachers and support them. We have curriculum pacing coming out with all the recommendations of what teachers should be hitting week by week in every grade level and every content area. We have templates that we've provided to help them create their lessons in a gradual release of responsibility mode. And we've got lots and lots of ed tech training coming and supports and recommendations, what apps they can use to encourage speaking and listening and reading and writing together. We also have coaching office hours for any teacher who feels like they need more direct support from a coach. We have content newsletters that will be regularly sent out for different content areas. We also have professional development that is not part of the tentative .5 compensation initiative, because we've got lots of new teachers, and they need to know how to use our curriculum and to know about our assessments and those types of things. Of course, we still have SWAN. And as we've expanded the sites that use SWAN, we've got a lot of training to do to ensure that they understand the curriculum and can use it to the best of their ability. Brad, can you switch the slide, please?
Did you see? Is it frozen?
It froze for a second, but I got it. Thank you. I do want you to know what we're doing regarding English learners. It's very near and dear to my heart that we are ensuring the most supports that we can for our vulnerable language speakers. And there's also a lot of state and federal expectations still that have not gone away even in this scenario. We still are required to assess our students, so we're working out how to do that safely and effectively for all involved. We're still required to redesignate our students and monitor students for academics and behavior and attendance that they're showing up online. We're still required to have our district English language accountability community and the site English language accountability. Senate Bill 98 requires us to continue, as we should, with our integrated and designated ELD. So again, we're working through all of these things. We're going to continue using the curriculum that we have, that we've adopted, and we have set forth in motion. And of course, we are looking carefully at how we translate, interpret it, and interpret for our families that need this vital information in their home language. We will continue, like I said before, with our district English learner advisory committee. And we're going to have those meetings. We already had our first meeting, and we will continue to each month. And actually, next time that we meet, we intend to bring to you what I like to call the State of the Union for English learners for our district. And hopefully, we'll be able to bring you a lot more information about the work that was done last year and leading into this year. That's still all moving forward, even in this virtual time. And of course, we're training all of our sites to think outside the box, how they might still be able to hold their virtual meetings and support students. We've created all the supports that they need. It's just now a matter of them reaching out to the families with our help and getting them involved so we can still meet those requirements, because we want parents to be informed. We want to hear their voice, and we want them a part of the decision-making that we have. I wanted you to know that we've been working very, very carefully with Brad's team and Russ Selkens team on identifying the students that do not have internet. So last May and June, we had identified the students that were struggling. So that meant we were providing them with hard copies rather than the digital access, because they were still struggling with internet for various types of reasons. And right now, we've moved from, there were about 400 students, English learners, that had a difficulty getting online at the end of the year. And we've been able to support them and help them. And right now, we've narrowed that down to about 170 families that still report that they're having some kind of difficulty, or they may be a new family to the area. And it doesn't necessarily mean that they just haven't been able to make that phone call. Some of them, maybe their landlord doesn't allow them to have the internet set up and the cable company come onto their property. So there's all kinds of different reasons why this is happening, and we're working through that for that equity and access. The other neat thing is we have about 500 refugee students in our system now. And that number's actually almost doubled because the federal government has changed the guidelines on the years, the length of time that someone can be in the country and be considered a refugee. So we're working on supporting them. We are going to be contacting every single family and student on an ongoing basis to ensure that they're getting what they need and they have the supports to continue their academic journey with us in a robust way. And so it's very, very important to our team that we're working on that. I did want to share with you that the team, the curriculum instruction professional development, the coaches and the coordinators, in conjunction with Russ Selkens team, we've really been working on ensuring that teachers have what they need or learn what they don't know yet in terms of launching distance learning. So we have been creating templates and resources that are also grade-appropriate in grade bands, like K2, 36, and 712, on what students need to do. So students need to know how to be able to log onto Schoology. Students need to know how to be able to upload their assessments when the teacher requires something uploaded. So we've been providing scripts and video to teach the teachers and the students how to do this. There may be teachers that don't need our support. They know how to train their kids in that, and that's great. They don't have to use our supports. But if there's a teacher that's new to our system and doesn't really know Schoology yet, they can just hit play on the video and learn with their students, too, and get through the same expectations of distance learning and that skill set they need. TK12, we have that ready to go for our families. We will be doing diagnostic assessments. We need to know where our kids came from this last year, what their learning needs are to move forward with them. And all of this will be provided to parents in a very robust parent communication plan we have ready to go forward. Again, like I was saying, with this first four weeks, we have all of these resources. We're going to take them through this gradual release of responsibility where the teacher does it, and that's the "I do." And then week two, everybody does it together. That's the "we do." Week three is a little more gradual release, where you do this together, and let me watch you, and I'll coach you. It's just very much like that coaching, where you model it, and then you step back slowly so that the player can do it themselves. And then in week four, TK12, all of our students will have this skill set for distance learning to use if and when and as they need it. Lastly, I wanted to share with you, again, of course, it's still tentative, but we've been making our plan for professional development, should it be ratified and approved by the board. We've been creating these virtual libraries to support folks on really two buckets this year. And Dr. Noguchi has talked about it, the diversity, the race. year, and Dr. Noguchi has talked about it, the diversity, the race and social justice, this idea that we must address equity and access for all of our students. And so that's the first real big bucket of work that we're doing with our staff, classified management and certificated. And then the second bucket is like what I've explained to you, this distance learning, ensuring that the teachers have the skillset they need for all types of technological learning. Always remembering that pedagogy, great pedagogy is our focus. Technology is a vehicle to provide great pedagogy. It's not so much about the technology as it is about great learning. And then it happens to be that we're doing great learning right now online, so there's a set of skills that we have to provide our students for that. And this still comes in with this idea of the social and emotional, the supports that we provide our students. I've been working with Mr. Herbst on an online video library where folks can learn how to work through social, emotional, through the screen, through the distance learning, how do they set up their routines, how do they work and meet the needs of the kids, even when we're not face-to-face, but we're in the online together, our scholars. So those are all the things, just a few of the things that we're working on in CIPD to ensure that we have the best that we can provide our community and our scholars with distance learning right now. Thank you, Brad.
Mr. Godot, you're still muted.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah.
Next steps, we're going to continue to outreach over the next two weeks to families regarding the internet connectivity. We're going to be distributing devices that started today. Over the next week, we've got teacher and support and training happening district-wide on August 4th, 5th, and 6th, as well as monitoring and supporting our vulnerable populations, as Dr. Odell pointed out. So I know that I recognize that was a long presentation, a lot of information, but we are happy to take your questions, et cetera.
Okay, yes. Now, I am not sure, but Mr., oh, I see trustee West has a question. All right, trustee West, are you ready?
Yes, yes. First of all, wow. I cannot even imagine how much work went into figuring out all of these little details. You guys have thought of, well, you probably haven't thought of everything, but that will come up, but it seems like you are covering all the bases, and I just appreciate all the work from the team that went into this. Thank you so, so much. I had a couple of questions. The curriculum pacing that was talked about, is this going to coordinate with the pacing for the virtual academy? And the reason I'm asking this is because I want to know if students begin the first term, which is going to be a semester or trimester, I believe, if they begin it with the virtual academy and then at the end of the term, they want to switch back to the distance learning, is that going to be pretty seamless in their education? Or how easy will this be for our students to make that transition?
Trustee Dr. West, this is Brad. I'll answer that. There is the potential for some bumps in the road in the transition at the end of a grading period. We talked a little bit about that last week, but that is one of the things that we do outline for parents when they enroll. There are some issues. There aren't always, you know, perfect crossover courses. So yeah, it can be a bit bumpy. The idea at the beginning was that this would be a year-long, but we also recognize that there may be a necessity to change students' placement at the end of the grade span.
Okay, and that makes sense. Thank you. And then the second question I have is concerning learning pods. I've been reading about those and hearing about those, and a lot of parents are interested in getting small groups of students together socially distancing, wearing masks, but kind of students working together either with a tutor or with a parent, sometimes with a teacher. Are we going to have anything to do with learning pods, or is that kind of strictly up to parents to organize those?
So let me respond to that. I know that that's out in the media a lot, especially in the Bay Area and to some degree down in Southern California. In Stanislaw County, in the last 10 days, we've had 240 kids diagnosed positive with COVID. And over the course since March, we've had 680. It was told to us today that we do not want to bring kids together unless it is outside and for a real need. So meaning, you need to get your computer, you need to do your assessment because you're special ed, but bringing kids together as a school, that's not something that we are going to do until after our positive rate is decreased to a significant amount.
Okay, and that makes sense. Thank you. And again, thank you for all of the hard work, everyone. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Now to trustee Newman.
Thank you, team. I want to echo Dr. West's comments of thanking everybody. This is amazing work, and I've been following it closely because, you know, I've got an anxious senior. So the, just...
Take that off now, but I have it on. You can't see it?
Trustee, we can hear you, trustee, I mean superintendent. Go ahead, trustee Newman.
Oh, sorry. So the question I had was, I'm getting this from students, are you going to be using Teams or Zoom? It looked like Teams based on the report, but I want to confirm that.
Yes, it is Teams. That will be the primary conferencing, but there are also some adjustments that have been made to Schoology video conferencing as well that have been upgraded over the summer.
So the direct instruction can either be queued in Schoology or it can be live, right?
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. So some of the, you know, a teacher may only give one lecture a day for, you know, the history lecture a day, and that could be queued and the students could access it during any time, or would they need to access it during their class time?
No, teachers will need to provide the direct instruction during the specific period of that instructional schedule during the day. Now, a teacher may screencast it, meaning record themselves, say, first period providing the lecture, then they could play that later in the day in a different period or even the next day. But there is a requirement that the teacher is still engaging with the students during that time. We can't just press a recording and then go check out.
Okay. And then I know we address counselors and what we're doing, trying to put people, everybody's got to kind of wear different hats and to serve the needs of our students. I appreciate that work that's been done. That's difficult. One of them that was, I didn't see anything specifically, was college counselors. And is there a plan with regard to the college counselors that are at each of our high school sites?
It wasn't separated. Great question. It wasn't separated specifically to college counselors. I will tell you truthfully, even in a distance learning format, there's a lot of work done by our counselors, just in terms of attempting to meet with large numbers of kids from a distance learning format. So it was a heavy lift. The one thing, though, that we've agreed to engage in, trustee Newman, is a re-engagement on some of those groups with whom we want to look to make sure that either A, we've addressed all the duties that we think are applicable, B, to also get a sense of what the workload is for those individuals once the dust settles. So college counselors are lumped in with the counselors on top of their typical job-related duties, but it'll be something that we relook at once the dust settles and the school starts.
Yeah, because there are certain things that they need to be doing with each of the seniors during this period of time before November 30th, the end of most, the end of the bulk of the application season. Okay. And then Wednesdays, what should be the expectations of a parent with regard to, if you have a third grade student on Wednesdays? What should I expect as a parent of how long my child will be in school?
Wednesday does not have the prescribed regimented schedules we talked about before. So this is a golden opportunity for our teachers to be able to provide some differentiated instruction for some of our students who may not be accessing distance learning and/or struggling with the content. So I guess you could say it would probably depend on the individual child. I could see a child who may be performing close to or at grade level after the check-in, getting assigned work and being able to work independently and then check back in with the teacher. That person wouldn't have nearly as much face time as potentially Mark Hurst in the back of the room who's struggling with some of the math content. I could then engage in a much, much more targeted reteach or pre-teach some of the lessons that are coming. So Wednesday, whereas it's pretty regimented, that Wednesday is a little bit more nebulous. But on the flip end of it, I do think it allows us to get a little bit more prescribed with some of our students who typically struggle.
Okay. So should the parents plan that their student has to be, their child has to be, you know, signed in? We're checking attendance that day, we're checking attendance every day.
Absolutely.
So I'm just trying, parents are asking me questions and I'm trying to like kind of explain, okay, this will be the day, how it will be going.
Trustee Newman, I would say that the simplest answer to that is students are expected to be engaged from the start of the day, which at TK-6 is going to be 8:30 a.m., to the conclusion of the day at 3:00 p.m. We're responsible for accounting for what those learning activities and instructional activities are throughout the day. There may be times, depending on the day of the week and the time of the instructional block, where students might be expected to be working independently, but that isn't to think that they can log out and go, you know, on a trip or leave for the day. They really are attending through the entire school day, so to speak.
That's great. Good clarification. Thank you. That's it. Those are all my questions for tonight. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Those were good. All right, I have trustee Walker and then trustee Irvin.
All right. So much for Wednesday field trips. Mark, I can help you with the math thing in the back of the classroom later. My real, and again, if folks don't realize the difference between now and what we were in the fall, take a step back at all the work, because we talked about it last week. It's amazing. It's, we all agree. Couple of notes I took, one goes back to sort of Mark on the special ed. You talked about documentation procedural changes. And my first thought there when I saw that was, that actually looks like a best practice that should be incorporated for time memorial. Does that make sense in your world?
It does. I mean, well, first off, just the documentation is always essential to demonstrate what we're doing to reach out to our families. But the distance learning plan, and I think that's what you're referring to, really is that agreement when we reach out to the family that, hey, we recognize that we can't replicate exactly what we do. However, we have agreed as a team to target the following goals and objectives, services that we can provide, and here's what we're going to do. It provides focus to those providers, and I think it provides meaning to those families as well. They instituted the DLP, the distance learning plan, at the end of last year is very successful. I'm looking forward to it being successful this year as well.
It just really seems like what you would call a real foundation sort of for building that relationship between the student, the family, and us, that avoids what we've seen in the last, at least I've seen in the last five years, where there's a disconnect.
Yeah.
And this, to me, certainly sounds like something that's a byproduct of distant learning, but really does reinforce structurally what is a core concept of doing IEPs and special ed.
Correct.
And so that, to me, was encouraging. I'm going to leave seamless transition alone, because we've got that. Everybody else is giving me whiplash. As soon as I get healthcare coverage, I'll get treated. The Schoology thing, and then here's the question that's come up, because I've logged on, I've got my kid's account. It's two weeks out. When do we find out what the schedule is? I can't see as a parent what classes my students in, what the teachers are, and in previous years, we would have already picked up textbooks, you know, the Source program at Enox, which isn't going on, would be going on. And I know everybody's ramping up, but as a parent and my senior down the hall, there's no classes, there's nothing for us to work with two weeks out. When does that resolve?
Yeah, I'll be happy to take that, trustee Walker. We recognize that, that is a challenge, but given the circumstances, we do have, depending on the site, some master schedule adjustments that will need to be made as we transition MVA students out of master schedules, as we're transitioning teachers that are going into MVA out of schedules and making those adjustments. So yeah, I would anticipate probably the week before, you know, next, end of next week would be a target for that. There isn't a lot of leeway in the number of things that need to take place between now and August 7th, as far as getting students in the classes they need. There will be a period of time at the start of the year where we are going to be, you know, counselors would be normally going through this, making sure students are in the classes that they need. If there's any scheduling issues or stuff like that, there will be protocols in place at sites around who does the student or the family contact, how do they get that time virtually with a counselor to make adjustments? But yeah, that is frustrating. I can see as a parent, currently parent, right, looking for class schedules, but recognize that there are a number of different machinations that need to take place over the next two weeks that we just can't. We would be communicating a lot of changed schedules, let's say, if we needed to do that now.
I understand. I just know that it's not just me as a parent. I've also got the senior student who's trying to figure out sort of what happened to electives, because certain electives aren't going to be adaptable to distance learning, in a sense that if you were somebody that was doing a CTE welding or framework, you're clearly not welding in the backyard. And so there's got to be adjustments to all of that. And so that's out of my little personal circle, but I know folks are thinking about it, and we're certainly looking to see what the schedule looks like so that we can adjust and help. And I'll figure out how to do the Schoology thing later. We've got Power School, it's not telling me anything, but that's okay, you're working.
I do, trustee Walker, I do want to address the comment about if an elective will be in the master schedule. As I mentioned at a previous board meeting, it might have been last week even, that we are, our approach has been those classes that were in the master schedule when we broke for summer are going to be in the master schedule, provided that we've got the staffing there. So we're not eliminating any courses strictly on, because it's hands-on and now it's going to be distance learning, we've got to rethink how we do that with very creative professionals. But we don't want to eliminate the opportunities for students to learn about the welding and ag and all of those, you know, hands-on CTE courses. So it'll be a challenge, but we're up for it.
No, I just, it's one of those things that's sticking out right now, because we're watching the clock just like you are. And so, and I'm sure I'm not asking the questions any different than anybody else out there trying to figure out who's on first and second. So for parents out there, we don't have any inside information. The only other comment I had was, and I guess it's a judgment call, and you talked about people bringing in their own PPE, when you were talking about Mark, maybe on this one-on-one assessment idea. The only thing that makes me nervous about that is if your PPE was laying in the truck or it was laying on the couch or on the floor and you brought it into a classroom, is that really where we want to be versus providing something that we know is righteous? And I don't know if that is an answer right now, but it's certainly something I think about when I see people drag the mask off the dashboard or off the gear shift lever or mom picking the mask up off the floor, the concrete as they're walking into the store with Cheetos all over it. You get my get...
I do.
You know what I'm saying?
Point taken, yeah, point taken, definitely.
It's just something I think's worth looking at. And then I've got nothing else, great job, and I'll keep watching for the class list.
All right. Thank you, trustee Walker. Then I have trustee Irvin, trustee Brown, and then trustee Lopez. All right.
Yes. Yes. A question I had, one of them actually trustee Walker got answered for me about the schedule. But the other one I had is, you know, we got telehealth, telecommute, tele-everything right now. Do we have tele-tutor for access for our students that may need extra assistance and, you know, can have access to a tutor or paraprofessional or, you know, through, via, you know, online, you know, so they can get the extra help that they need? I know it's supplemental services, providing for that, and how are we dealing with that issue?
I'll take this one, and just to start it off, the paraprofessionals will get devices, so yeah, they'll be available to assist our students. But on the flip end of it, and I'll look forward to sharing with this with the board, either in a communication or a formal presentation, superintendent Noguchi's charged me with developing an after-school intervention program and/or supports and services. So there's a number of people that are working on that, some interdepartmental collaboration. I look forward to discussing that, but I think that was a very, very good point. I look forward to discussing that, but I think that was a very, very good point in terms of how we meet the needs of some of our kids that have been struggling. So yes, a a a a plan to come.
Okay. Uh again, I just want to uh reiterate the other trustees and their um uh their kudos for, you know, you would think this was a contingency plan that we were putting into place uh that had been developed maybe, you know, some years back, but um you guys have really uh made things happen. You know, you made this plan. I know it's still unfolding and we still have yet to um, you know, still still have yet to come to see how this um unfolds all the way out. But I I think you've really done a really great job and um coming together as a team to to make sure that our students and our teachers and our families um have as as minimal of disruption of their uh educational um lives as possible, you know, as as humanly possible at this point in time. So I I really commend you on that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, trustee Irvin, on to trustee Brown. And then those of you that have your hands up, would you please lower them so I know you're not still planning to speak? Thank you. All right, trustee Brown.
Yes, I've got a couple of questions, but first of all, as we move into education redefined, thanks to our entire team for all the effort. First question that came to mind had to do with assignments and homework and testing. And we've got new methodology for every grade level so that we can do appropriate assessments. I want to make sure that we are uh sensitive with the homework assignments, given the fact that we've got parents trying to guide students on computers and they're going to be allocating a huge chunk of their day and possibly having to do their own distance employment. I want to make sure we're not overly heavy on homework that's going to require additional parent time that isn't available. So want to make sure that we're real sensitive to uh parent uh timeframes as well as the student timeframes. So has there been any uh discussion about how much homework and out uh assignments outside of the uh the logged-in class time?
There, there has not been specific discussions about the amount of time, but to your point, um and I and I don't have the yellow A open right in front of me, but it really does talk about the idea of homework being assigned for review of skills taught. So I I and I know, I don't think this quite gets to everything you are that what you're referencing, uh 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 trustee Brown. But it really is more homework for practice purposes to where we wouldn't be taking a lot of uh parent time attempting to reteach content to the children. So again, I I I hear what you're saying about, hey, that may not get to the minutes, but at least it spells out the fact that the homework is supposed to be review of 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 skills that a child should be able to do independently.
Okay, thank you. Um I I just want to make sure that we're sensitive to the time that parents are having to put in.
Yep.
So the next question that I have, I've, you know, our focus is getting students back in classrooms. And as soon as that's possible, I'm curious what kind of carryover we're going to have from this experience. I see that we're uh thrusting technology on all of our students very rapidly. Do we have the intent of that uh personal device going into uh or with a student back to the classroom so that they can now take advantage of what they've learned in technology with the distance learning?
Uh trustee Brown, uh this is Brad. I'll I'll take that. I I think that depending on the grade level, the grade span uh would probably dictate to some extent how often the device might travel back and forth. Uh before we broke, uh before we knew we were heading into distance learning, we were having that conversation, um recognizing whether it was a hybrid model or or some other uh form of of instruction in this time period. Um so I I guess the answer to that would be it would depend on the grade level. Having a TK or K coming back and forth every day with a device might not be the best. Um but if you had a specific day of the week for them to bring in a device to to further engage and learn more and and utilize, um that was the direction we're going. So uh I think you're on to something there. That's definitely something teachers would be considering.
Thank you. And the fact that that device is in the home and that the whole family is receiving instruction on technology is a real valuable educational tool that uh we need to recognize. So you know, there there is always the silver lining on the dark cloud and uh so many opportunities that we have for parent education and technology training. So hoping that we can really take advantage of that and move forward in some unusual directions. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you, trustee Brown. Trustee Lopez.
Yeah, hi. First of all, I want to say thanks, thanks to everyone that um that did the report and thanks uh to everyone for doing the great turnaround. Uh I like to put out the example that, I mean, last week we were having the conversation around the lunches and this week we 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 solved it, right? And you guys probably solved it Tuesday, eight AM in the morning. Um so that just shows how how great of a work you guys are doing. Uh one of my questions was answered, which was around tutoring. Definitely want to have an after-school uh version program that gives extra help to our students. My other question is, as we get closer to the uh to the starting date, those one hundred and seventy students, what what kind of options are we thinking if we can't get landlords or we can't get um uh internet providers out to the homes? What are we thinking with knowing that maybe uh paper is, paper uh options is not going to work and because we're thinking um now, now teachers are going to be connecting with with uh with students, right? We we want that, them to be a part of that as well.
Let's have Russ, um or Mr. Selkhan answer that one. Mr. Selkhan, are you here?
Yes. First of all, I guess I'll take it to the nth degree where we have a long procedure and steps to help get them connected to viable internet services. And I think we mentioned them on the last call, as well as getting them cost-effective because they have this thing in California called Internet Essentials. So it's ten dollars a month. Um we give them a pre-qualification letter. So there's different scenarios you're talking about. One would be if those carriers aren't in that area, we have a process where we'll look at it from a technical perspective. And then um if we can't get a typical carrier, we'll give them what they call an LTE or a hotspot option for them to use. And so that's the other option that we have available for the students and the parents. And I don't know if you're talking about if there's ever, we haven't ran into a situation where the common carrier is not an option nor the LTE light. Um I don't think we've uh will see that, but if we did fall into a situation where there was none of those technologies available, then what you kind of alluded to, we'd have to work through more of a traditional kind of paper strategy and structure for them. But so far, we haven't ran into any parents or families that have said that.
Yeah, no, my my concern was as uh I I believe Ms. Od- uh Odell brought up of uh some parents can't, their landlords aren't allowing uh hardware to be installed. And or landlords aren't responding. And what kind of other options do we have for them to still have to be uh on the internet while without having that hardware, right? Which which would be ideal because that provides the best um internet options for them.
Right. That one example that I gave with the LTE hotspot, that's the case where if the landlord will not let any premise changes take place, they would get this uh hotspot. But it is, we are pushing them towards the traditional carrier because of a number of reasons, and one of them is not only budget for us, um and then also the fact that the performance on those LTE isn't the same as a common carrier with cable modems and things like that. But the worst case is if there's no landlord uh ability, then we'll give them the LTE hotspot.
Great, great. And a hotspot like that would work out in, out in the country or is?
Yeah, so far we haven't had any, but it's not, it, there's different various, what they call bandwidth or speeds. But so far, we haven't run into a scenario where that wasn't at least an option for them to be able to use that.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's great, because that's been a question by a lot of board members throughout the state on connectivity. So that's really helpful that, well, the access that we have. I was talking to a family member and he was reminding me that we used to have modems. And we used to have that eek sound when we all logged in. So um I thought, well, if we don't have the towers, maybe we could do modems, if you all remember that. Anyway, so different now. But thank you for that, Russ. That was really helpful. Um Mr. Seeskin, thank you. That's Sulk- Selkhan, sorry. Um appreciate that. All right, next I have, okay, and then I have a question. Um I, so on the schedule, when I looked at the schedule uh for elementary school, you said, I believe it starts at eight thirty and ends at three. And then high school starts at nine fifteen, ends at two thirty. I was like, wow, big difference in high school schedule. So I was wondering about getting the minutes in uh for our students. So I don't know if you have that screen. I don't know what number it was, but it was the two charts, the elementary.
Yes.
Charts, yes.
Trustee Marks, give me a moment. I can, I can put that back up.
Okay.
I have it. I have another question too.
Got it there. So uh from here in the high, in the seven twelve schedule, uh this zero and eighth period also factors in. Uh but just these three periods are are such big blocks, eighty minutes per, that gives us two forty um by themselves. As far as the TK six daily instructional schedule, I'd have to go back and and do the minutes calculation, but between the the digital break and the lunch, um there's, there's a sufficient number of minimum instructional minutes.
Okay, I, because, because it looks like the day is starting later than we used to for, especially for high school, and ending at the same time, two thirty. So I was trying to figure out how we got the amount and minutes in. And I, so that must mean that the breaks are shorter. So I see it's a five-minute break, uh after lunch between the two periods. And then um in the morning, it's a fifteen-minute break. So that's about what they used to take. So I just was trying to figure out how that worked. Oh, no, it's nine fifteen to three, ten thirty-five. There aren't any breaks. Okay. So, all right, I guess that explains it. The breaks are shorter. I just wanted to make sure that our students had the amount of instruction that they were needing to complete all that they needed in school. Okay. All right, thank you. It looks like I have two more. I think trustee West brought her question back up. And then I have trustee Irvin and then trustee Lopez. Is that what I have? Okay, trustee West.
Thank you. Um I just had one more quick question. I had for, I forgot. Um I've had a lot of parents who are trying to decide whether to go the virtual academy or the distance learning. And so um just a scenario, if a parent starts with a distance learning and then schools open back up at some point and the parent is not quite ready for the student to come back to campus, what are the options?
Well, the option would be.
Before the trimester or semester.
Right. The option would be that they could uh add their name to the list for Modesto Virtual Academy. Um but uh that that's about where that would be. Uh any any mid-year adjustment depending on uh any number of factors, but students wanting to come back from MBA to uh distance learning or whatever that is at that time. Uh but we we, I I I wouldn't foresee a a a free-flowing back and forth of uh that process. It's just, it's just we can't accommodate all that. But we are tracking uh the MBA requests now, and so that that is, we get a date and a timestamp when uh families are going in and uh using that link to indicate interest. So that's, that's about as best as I can answer that right now.
I think that's totally understandable. I just, the parents that I've spoken with are just, you know, they're on the fence. They're just not sure which is the best way to go. And that's understandable because no one can tell what the future is going to be. So, all right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, I have trustee Irvin and then trustee Walker.
Uh yes, this, I'm I'm going back to the uh tutoring again. I I know we're going to have thousands of students who uh who are going to be doing the, you know, both distance learning and virtual academy. Is there any way or possibility to create opportunities for some of our 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 students to serve as as tutors? You know, maybe provide some professional development to them and create opportunities, I don't know, maybe through CTE or STIPEN to um help them become tutors to their 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 peers and, you know, some of the junior high elementary schools that they can maybe, maybe help. Um, you know, I'm just thinking, thinking out loud and thinking about the massive numbers of students that's going to be neat, maybe need help. Um and trying to deploy maybe some future teachers who who, you know, may have teacher on their mind, you know, at this juncture, maybe getting some exposure or something like that. I don't know, maybe create some opportunities for some of our students to give back as well. Just a thought.
It's a great idea.
All right. Thank you, trustee Irvin. Trustee, um, let's see, wait. Who, Walker? Sorry, Lopez took his off. Trustee Walker.
I just wanted to piggyback off of sort of been listening to everybody and sort of listening. Piggybacking off of what trustee Brown talked about with homework time, you mentioned assessments. The other part of this that I really haven't focused in on, and I don't think it's part of this particular agenda item, but maybe the next meeting or so, what is the plan as far as coming back with a distance learning approach to assess how much has been lost with our students between the shutdown last year and coming back this year and getting back to grade level? Because to me, that's a tricky process in a one-on-one situation in a classroom where you actually have a teacher being able to do sort of effective, you know, question-answer assessments versus the online version versus what does it take to figure out what that slippage was and how do we get back to grade level? I have a hard time believing that we didn't lose steps. I don't think anybody's questioning that. Certainly at the state level as to what happened at the end of the year. But, you know, is that something we could look at down the road here as we get into the opening year? Where are we really at compared to where we were when all this started? And what ground needs to get made up to get back to even, if that makes sense?
So trustee Walker, this is Dr. Noguchi. Um that that is part of the plan as far as assessing um both learning loss and where kids are at. I do know that one of the, my goals that that was set together collectively back in May, I think it's goal number two, and that is um English and math, pre and post-test. So we're going to take a look at where kids have, where where kids have started. I also recognize, and and then obviously where kids end up. Um I do know that we have diagnostic assessments that um CIPD have worked to create. Um SWAN has also um developed for the math um elementary level diagnostics to be able to identify the the holes. We will have a whole other presentation on this because this is bigger than a quick question. It's much bigger than that. But we will come back to you on um what we've done, what we found, and then uh what we will uh be moving forward as a result of it.
And that makes perfect sense, which is sort of what I was getting at, is it, it may not apply to this presentation, but it's certainly got to be a big piece of what's sitting out there to sort of, you know, get a grip on where we were, where we are, where we're going. And we're still missing all the state assessments because they were canceled, and I have no doubt they're going to try to throw them back over the fence this year. But it's on the agenda. It's on your radar. Good enough for me.
Okay, so that concludes the uh questions from the board members. Uh Ms. Noonan, do we have any comments from the public?
Um, no, not on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. So we are going to have a, take a ten-minute break. And we're going to put a clock on the screen so that you will know when we will resume the next meeting. All right, it's going to be for ten minutes. We'll see you back in ten minutes. We'll see you back in ten minutes. Yes. All right, welcome back, everybody. Glad we have the timer. It just helps us know how much time we have. Now we are on to item B three. The report on and approval, so we'll be voting on this one, of services agreement with the Center for Human Services to provide student assistance specialist program and general education counseling service, family support specialist program and refugee case manager for 2020, 2021 school year. And Ms. Hinkle is going to be giving this report.
If you don't mind, I just want to say a couple of words. First off, that may have been one of the longest titles in the history of MTS. But either way, yeah, senior director of student support services, Daniel Hinkle is going to do this presentation. I just really, before we get started, I want to publicly acknowledge the longstanding positive relationship we have with the center and their staff. On the year-to-year, including last year, and Danielle's going to touch on this, they continue to exceed, meet and exceed our expectations for the social emotional support that we provide to our kids throughout this district. I consider executive director Cindy Duenas and her staff to be top-notch people with integrity, honesty, and a strong, strong, strong work ethic. So in any event, Daniel Hinkle is going to, is going to share kind of the work that was done and the work that goes forward and hopefully seek your guys' approval on the services agreement with the Center for Human Services. Ms. Hinkle, take it away.
All right, thank you, Mark. Good evening, Board President Marks, trustees, superintendent Noguchi and cabinet members. As Mark mentioned, the purpose of my presentation this evening is to highlight our relationship with the Center for Human Services and the social emotional support services that they provide. I'm going to be sharing some data that supports the successes of the programs and also share how services transitioned from brick and mortar to distance learning this past spring. And last but not least, I'll be seeking approval for the four aforementioned services agreements with the Center for the 2020, 2021 school year. This report and subsequent approval of service agreements is in direct alignment with district goal one point four, develop a multi-tiered system of supports for all students. The Center for Human Services is a nonprofit community counseling agency. Modesto City Schools and the center have formed a collaboration that has continued to expand over the last thirty years. The center's primary role with Modesto City Schools is to provide much-needed social emotional support for students. Even amidst school closures, CHS was instrumental in shifting the work to continue with a strong support system for our students. Our work with the center engages four different provider types. The largest number of providers comes as student assistance specialist or the SAS. These support staff are assigned to support all thirty-four sites. Their primary role is providing tier two and tier three support to students with social and/or emotional needs. Students are served either in a set number of individual sessions or in a group setting. The SAS can also provide parent trainings or presentations as determined by site administration. Our junior high and high school sites have an addition, have had an additional SAS located in the intervention center. During brick and mortar instruction, the IC SAS is the primary person involved in de-escalation and/or social emotional skill building with students. I'd like to point out, this was mentioned earlier, that with this year beginning and distance learning model, the work has been refocused for the intervention center teachers and thus hiring for the intervention center SAS is currently paused. As for data, student assistance specialists served 2,384 clients last year and had more than 10,000 individual sessions. When students were in crisis, the SAS assisted by providing 379 crisis intakes. They facilitated 599 group sessions and provided over 300 classroom presentations. In addition to the student assistance specialist, the district also contracts with the Center for Mental Health Clinicians to serve targeted sites. The district utilizes a behavioral consultation model, which allows clinicians to provide individual and group counseling to a small number of tier three students. The primary role of the clinicians, however, has been to work alongside the adults in the school, whether it be administrators, teachers, and even parents on how to best identify and work with students who exhibit or have mental health challenges. Data for the behavioral consultation clinicians showed 765 hours of clinical counseling for 127 tier three students. They facilitated 77 crisis contacts and engaged in a combined total of 694 classroom observations with staff consultation and training. Beginning this past year in 2019, 20, the district contracted with the center as part of a grant through the Learning Communities for School Success Program. This grant was written to address chronic absenteeism with resources funding family support specialists at eleven targeted school sites. Under direction of the site administrative team, the family support specialists provide outreach and work directly with the family in addressing chronic absenteeism or even extreme behaviors. The work centers around family skill building and ongoing parent education and training. As some of the newest providers in MTS, the family support specialists hit the ground running in their work with more than 300 families and 1,061 family contacts. Work with families has a goal of troubleshooting the barriers and providing education to improve attendance or help manage difficult behaviors, both at home and at school. Family support specialists engaged in a number of trainings for parents and staff, and they have also participated in SARB meetings. Also new in 2019, 20 was a grant-funded contract with the center as part of the California Newcomer Education and Well-being, or CALNEW, grant. Terms of the, of the grant include a refugee case manager to provide mental health, medical and educational resources and transition support as families acclimate to life in the United States. In this inaugural year, the case manager worked with a list of 302 potential refugee families across 31 Modesto City School sites. The case manager worked closely to support 20 families in their native languages from Afghanistan and Iran. Case management increased families' access to necessary resources, both at school and in the community. With regard to data for Center for Human Services providers and as a means to help us gauge effectiveness of their services, the center conducts annual satisfaction surveys with Modesto City School staff, students and families. And in the essence of time, I'm not going to read all of these from the next few slides, but I will share just a few of them. So from this slide, from our school staff, 100% of our staff who responded to the survey indicated that services provided by the center is having a positive impact in helping students. And then specifically on this slide down near the bottom, with regard to our remote services with Center for Human Services, 99% of the families indicated their student benefited, and it was easy to connect with the center's providers during school closures. The surveys also include opportunities for individuals to provide comments. And again, I won't read all of them, but just a few. First, from a parent, services have been very helpful. My son has made tremendous progress in his behavior. And from another parent, we are very appreciative of the services and that they can, could continue during the shutdown. Our child really benefits from the support he's given. And one more slide, again, I won't read all of it. From one staff member, Center for Human Services staff are a tremendous asset to our school in helping with mental health concerns for our students as well as educating staff and parents about various mental health topics. And lastly, CHS staff supported us with an all-hands-on-deck approach during our school closures. They conducted home visits to support students and families with distance learning and engagement. In thinking about our transition to distance learning back in the spring, I really could not be more proud of the relationship that we had with Center for Human Services leadership staff. As schools closed, associate superintendent Herbst and I immediately engaged in collaborative conversations with the center to determine how the work would shift. We outlined a clear process for the providers to continue working not only with existing students on their caseloads, but also those who had previously been on a waitlist and even new referrals. In many ways, they were able to work through so many students. It was really, just was amazing how many students they were able to meet with. The center's staff also provided a layer of support with preliminary risk evaluations, and they supported the MCS social emotional hotline. At the end of the year, Mr. Herbst and I re-engaged with the center in an after-action review to discuss challenges and how we could work through those challenges as well as their successes. So I do want to just share a few of the challenges and, and what we did to address those. First and foremost, there was a little bit of an issue with confidentiality when we were conducting or when the center staff was conducting virtual meetings. Sometimes students were, you know, in the living room with the rest of the family there, and it really was not a confidential place to help students. So the center staff worked with parents to discuss the importance of a confidential, secure space. And families were. secure space, and families were great in moving students either to another location in the home or perhaps shifting to telephone support. Another challenge that we were able to work through was the Center staff uses Google Voice phone numbers. They were working from home, and so these Google Voice numbers were a way to protect their personal cellphone numbers, but the challenge is they come across as a blocked phone call or a blocked number. So obviously, there were some parents who weren't accepting those calls, and as a remedy, the school staff actually called and scheduled these telephone calls with the Center for Human Services staff, letting parents know the exact date and time that the call would come in, as well as the fact that it would be a blocked call helped tremendously. We had a few hesitations with some parents with the phone or virtual meetings, especially with our younger students. They, you know, are you, who you really say you are? You know, they just wanted to be sure. And again, this was resolved with our site administration reaching out the families to reassure them of the school's working relationship with the Center, as well as encouragement to continue having their student work with providers. And then the last challenge, which was one that was very easy to remedy, is student engagement in a virtual or online setting is different. And so the Center staff adjusted sessions to be shorter in length but more frequent in nature, and parents really appreciated that shift. Some of our successes, we're, I can't tell you enough how incredibly grateful we are for the seamless transition, or what seemed seamless, in the services provided by the Center. There were no delays to services, and staff not only accommodated existing students, as I mentioned before, but were able to add on additional students to their caseloads. On many occasions, not only were the individual students supported by the Center's staff, but the entire family. There were occasions where the entire family was learning about strategies for improved communication, for boundary setting, and parent education. We also had staff from the Center who created some short informational wellness videos, and those were put on for, on the district website for parents to access or staff. And as mentioned before, there was an all-hands-on-deck approach in working to support schools. I'm excited to share a project that we're currently working on for this new school year, which includes several components. One is monthly newsletters in both English and Spanish with a social-emotional, mental health or wellness topic of the month, and this would be posted for all M C S families and students to view online. Center from the staff is also looking to develop an at-home video series for parents. These would include topics such as how to motivate learning, strategies for challenging behavior, creating a workspace, topics along those lines. And lastly, we're also exploring the idea of having the CHS behavior clinicians host virtual coffee talks. This would be a series of live mental health or social-emotional or wellness presentations provided by CHS staff, followed by a Q and A, again, open to the entire Modesto City Schools community. So we're pretty excited about these new expansions of their services during school closures. In thinking about next steps, just like we have in prior years, we will have our site administration work with CHS staff to engage in a needs analysis for the site. This really helps drive the work to be specific for each school site and their needs. Now more than ever, we need to ensure effective communication, so site administration and staff fully understands the role of each provider and the specific and unique services that they provide. We need to continue promotion of the supports out in the community and to our families, and that would be via our district's communication tools, via website, social media, et cetera. And we need to ensure careful data tracking to determine strengths and to troubleshoot areas for growth. Lastly, and very important, we're also seeking approval for the 2020-2021 services agreements for the Center for Human Services providers, specifically the Student Assistance Specialists, Behavior Consultation Clinicians, Family Support Specialists, and the Refugee Case Manager. And with all of that, I am happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. And I see Trustee Brown, and then Trustee West, and then can you return the screen back to the live screen? I don't know if Danielle does. Ah, perfect, awesome. Okay, so I had Trustee Brown, and then I said Trustee West, Trustee Walker, and then Trustee Irvin. That's the order that you're on my thing. So, okay, Trustee Brown.
Thank you for that presentation, and I appreciate that there is some forward thinking of some new ways of addressing needs. The coffee lunches sound like a great opportunity for families to get involved, and I would just recommend that those be available for an evening option for working parents. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. And I did not mention this, but that we would also be providing those in a Spanish, a Spanish presentation as well.
Great.
That's great. Okay, Trustee West?
Thank you for this presentation. As you know, this is near and dear to my heart. My question is, how do the Center for Human Services Student Assistance Specialists collaborate with our own credentialed school counselors that we have in our district?
So collaboration occurs actually with a number of different school staff, the counselors, teachers, it could be an administrator, but they do work together in tandem. Oftentimes, the guidance counselor would be meeting with the student, perhaps for a variety of academic reasons, and through their discussions, the counselor might determine that this student needs a little bit more. And so what they do is they provide a referral to the Student Assistance Specialist, and then the SAS, with parent permission, meets with the student to kind of outline their series of sessions, but they absolutely work in tandem together.
And our credentialed school counselors at site, at every site, are also trained with social-emotional counseling. Do they also have the opportunity to work with kids in those areas as well?
Absolutely. If they, typically, they're not referred out to the Student Assistance Specialist or the Behavior Clinician unless they really felt like the topic needed more than they could provide, but absolutely, they can provide that type of support.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Walker?
So I'll echo Trustee West. This is something that's been near and dear to me for a long time. My dad worked this issue for decades at Health Services Agency. My real concern sort of going into this isn't that we didn't do the right thing before because we've been actual leaders on this for as long as I have ever paid attention to it. I mean, we've had intervention centers before there were intervention centers. We've expanded them. My real concern gets to, this really is, to me, not a distance learning model solution. If you've got students that are really in trouble, that intervention center was about a timeout and a personal interaction, and given that we've been in lockdown more or less for four or five months, is that a reasonable concern in the sense that, and adding in what you talked about with families, there's a number of occasions where the family's actually not the most helpful version of the issue, and may very well be the trigger for an issue that got you to the intervention center, that got you back on track, if I'm making sense.
You're absolutely making sense, Mr. Walker. We know that kids not having the opportunity to be at school and be with their peers and their adult mentors on campus is taking a toll. And so the intervention centers SAS that you mentioned, they receive the same similar training as the traditional SAS, and so any referral that is made to a Student Assistance Specialist, they would have those same types of social-emotional trainings, if you will, to be able to provide and support students. The challenge for us has been getting kids to engage in these supports. Students are often hesitant to engage, and sometimes it takes a listening teacher or a thoughtful friend who reaches out to other school staff, and we had a number of occasions this last spring where that, in fact, happened, and so we immediately had Center for Human Services staff reach out to families and students to provide support. But there's no doubt that our kids need this support, and I hear what you're saying about the IC SAS. I'm hopeful that once schools open back up, we can get them right back in place.
No, and I agree. I think that's part of the issue here, and it's something I've worried about since day one, is that in a lot of ways, and it's sort of tangential to this agenda issue, is that first set of eyes on that teacher that picked up something that was going wrong that nobody else picked up because they're working with that student that may have resulted in a really good thing, or could have ended up in a CPS call? Is a lot of that was triggered based on staff, teachers, you know, administrators coming in contact, that personal interaction that didn't require a student to jump to a phone, and I think that's a huge piece of, and this is very different than the instruction. And I think that's why I'm sort of animated about this, is there's a difference between teaching addition facts on distance learning and dealing with emotional distances issues over a line. Suze Wallen, former board member, worked at the ER at the hospital, and one of the things, she taught me way back in the day, and I talk to my dad about it, is when you get to extreme cases in this county, there's nobody to handle them. If you go into a 5150 in one of our hospitals, you're in a hallway on a gurney restrained, and somebody's calling to Sacramento, Fresno, or the Bay Area to ship you out. One of our few resources that I knew of locally was Hutton House, and they do a phenomenal job, but now my understanding is they're retooling, and I think what you guys do is amazing. I think what the district has done is astonishing. I think we've been at the forefront of this for a long time, even when we were being criticized heavily for not. All those things that Mr. Herbst and you and other members have done have been leading edge, but this personal contact, and I think the community's lack of understanding of actual certified medical professionals that we lack has never been something that's really been flushed out, and I think part of my statement is you guys do an amazing job. I don't think people realize when you go on a 5150, you're in a hallway, and that you get shipped out, and that this personal contact is just critical. And if you're dealing with teenagers, it's probably even more so. And keep up the good work. It's just a huge concern.
Mr. Walker, let me just make one little comment here. Earlier, when Dr. Odell was speaking about the various professional development that was going to be provided to teachers, one element that she mentioned was providing PD for teachers to help them engage in social-emotional type activities and lessons, if you will. And I think that we really have to dial into those. That helps us, even though we don't have eyes on a student, it might help us to have ears, to hear what they're saying, to be able to listen for things that might be an area of concern. So I'm pretty excited about those lessons and professional development as another level of support, if you will.
Keep on truckin'. In my list of things I lose sleep over, this is one of them, and I could be long gone, it could be five years down the road, and just because of my father and just because of the interest I have in the topic, I will always lose sleep over this in this valley because of our lack of resources. But great work, keep on truckin'.
All right, thank you, Trustee Walker. Trustee Irvin?
Yes, just like Trustee Walker and Trustee West, topic that's near and dear to my heart as a trained counselor and certified anger management specialist. My question is around crisis intervention, and what, 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 what things, and, you know, I'm already aware of the great work that the Center for Human Services does, that they've been doing at least 20 years that I've been here and watched them grow over the years and respond to the needs of our community from an emotional, social-emotional standpoint. But from a crisis intervention standpoint, how do we, how do we mitigate that? How do we respond? What plans are in place to respond to those if those come up in this COVID, you know, environment? How do we respond to crisis with students and/or within the family itself?
So again, I would say, as you know, every family situation, every student's crisis situation is different, and depending on the circumstances, we would have a different level of support. We, as mentioned in the presentation, we still have the SAS and clinician providers who can do a risk assessment for us amid school closures. We're in close contact with parents during all of these risk assessments. I'll be honest with you, if a parent does not have the means to take their student to their own private doctor or mental health counselor that they've been working with, their option is not one that's favored by Mr. Walker, but they can go to Doctor's Medical Center to receive assistance in that manner. Again, depending on the level of severity, we can set up students with sessions with the Behavior Clinicians or the Student Assistance Specialists, again, depending on the level of severity, but we, it's definitely a need and one that we're mindful to pay close attention to, especially during close school closures.
I just, I wanted to chime in. We also have a big contract with Aspirin that does a lot of our risk evaluations on top of what the Center does, so we feel pretty well-staffed in that regard. I also really want to give credit to Danielle Hinkle and her team. They had worked hand-in-hand with Maydi Herrera on how to deal with extreme situations through a distance learning format, i.e. suicidal ideations. So there's been a lot of information and a protocol that's out there for our school sites to follow, and hopefully we'd ever run into this situation, but where we do have some of those extremes that are out there in the community.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to know what our, our level of preparedness was in the, you know, crisis, you know, happen, in that we have a plan in place. And then I had one more question was that, in terms of, I know we used to get a lot of the interns and things for mental health and counseling and things like that within our district. How will they be able to be, you know, to get their hours, to be able to get their, you know, get signed off on and training and stuff like that as well?
Mr. Irvin, are you referring to interns that are working directly with the school site, or those that are working to complete hours through the Center for Human Services?
I think both, yeah, both, because I know there's both kind of overlap, depending on what their specialty is.
You know, anytime we're in school closures, for staff to get hours or interns to get hours, they're going to have to be working in a telehealth sort of format. I don't see that waning at all. We had a number of interns at some of our high school sites this last year. We have counseling interns that come in, but it'll be in the same distance format that we've utilized with our teachers and other staff. It would be in a video conferencing type of format.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all of the adaptations that have had to take place during COVID-19 in order to help meet the needs of our families and our students. So appreciate that, and especially for Center for Human Services in working towards that end, and I am, I like to hear these new ideas that are coming up. That's great that we have these new opportunities, and even the grant for the refugee families that have moved in our area. So that was awesome. I, I think I was researching some of that when we were trying to find some grants to help us at one time. So that's great that we have those supports now and finances to be able to support that. Well, this is a report and an approval, so I will read what we are approving, and then I will say, oh, wait, first, before I do that, I have to ask, and I believe we do have a comment. Ms. Noonan, do we have a comment from the public on this item?
Yes, we do, and I will go ahead and read it right now. It is from Steve Collins, and Steve is a Behavioral Health Manager actually at the Center for Human Services, and he says, "Modesto City Schools has been amazing to partner with us over the past several years. Our clinical staff have enjoyed being able to provide therapeutic services and support to the many schools they serve. During this time of distance learning, we are adapting our approach to reach even more students. Thank you for partnering with us." And that's the only comment I have on this item.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and I, I thought it was Steve Collins from, that's a former school board member, but I know he retired from MJC, so don't know if this is relative or not, but anyway. Well, that's great. That was a nice comment. And now I am ready to read the item and then take a question. So we are approving the services agreement with the Center for Human Services to provide Student Assistance Specialist Program and General Education Counseling Service, Family Support Specialist Program, and Refugee Case Manager for the 2020 and 2021 school year. Family Support Specialist Program, and Refugee Case Manager for the 2020 and 2021 school year. So I will take a motion to approve this item.
So we're looking for the longest item ever read out.
No, actually, I don't think it is the longest, but it was long. So Trustee Walker says, makes it a motion to approve it. Thank you, Trustee Walker, and seconded by Trustee Irvin. Did you put your hand up to make a motion, Trustee Irvin? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Trustee Walker, seconded by Trustee West. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
And I'll just say, are there any opposed? So I don't hear any opposed. I'm believing you all said yes, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
It was actually seconded by Trustee Irvin, I believe.
What did I say?
You said Trustee West.
I apologize, Trustee Irvin. I knew it was Trustee Irvin.
We sound alike.
Yeah, right. Oh, thank you. Thank you for the correction, Ms. Noonan. Appreciate that. My goodness. Okay, must be long evening. Be for a report on the draft of the Equity and Racial Justice Framework. And I believe Mr. Herbst is going to be doing this.
That's me. Where's Mr. Godell when I need him the most? Let me attempt to share this screen. How are we doing over there?
Can we see it?
Oh, I was looking at a Chicago logo. I was like...
Well, hopefully not any longer. Hopefully my camera's...
Okay, I was getting ready to shut my screen down.
You got it. We can see you.
But you guys can see the PowerPoint, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, good evening, Board President Marks and trustees. I want to say how much I appreciate the opportunity of being able to share this important work with you. Tonight, I'm going to provide you with a draft and get your input and recommendations on the proposed Equity and Racial Justice Framework, designed to increase outcomes for student populations that have typically struggled to succeed in our current education system. I plan to discuss the purpose of the equity work. I'd like to provide you with a draft of the key actions proposed in the Equity and Racial Justice Framework for your feedback. I then plan to increase an existing services agreement that I would take as a consent item for board approval at the August 17th board meeting to expand the work surrounding equity. You can find equity littered throughout our district goals, but I truly believe it most closely aligns with Goal One. And that's the idea of increasing academic achievement to ensure equitable access to enable all of our students to attain college and career readiness. There truly are multiple reasons why we feel the need to engage in this work at a deeper level. I believe we would be completely remiss and missing the boat if we don't recognize the unrest that exists across our nation and in our very community. The fact of the matter is inequities exist in our society and also in our district. Over the years, we have made progress in a number of areas. Probably the most noticeable has been regarding discipline. But trust me, even then, there's more work that could be done in that area as well as many others. I kind of want to move into the nuts and bolts of the framework. So the framework really proposes actions at multiple levels, including the district, site, and with students. And I want to point out, even though the framework is a one-year, kind of what I'm looking for is recommendations, feedback on the one-year plan, we fully recognize that equity work is not a one-and-done, meaning we will continue to, to take this work forward in the years to come. But in any event, at the district level, we plan to expand the work we started this year with administrators and provide a keynote by Dr. Nancy Dome from Epic Education. Nancy's well-respected with her work on equity and has done considerable work in other large districts. Dr. Dome and her team provided training to administrators on July 20th and 21st. Both days were incredibly received by, they were received so well by our administrators, high percentages of administrative positive feedback. We plan to have Dr. Dome provide a similar training to teachers when they return on August 4th. This is going to give the teachers kind of the why behind the equity work and build momentum to start the school year. We're also developing a task force that's going to be led by myself and Dr. Dome. This task force is going to include school personnel, including administration at the site and district level, teachers, support staff, community members, labor partners, and a variety of other individuals. The primary purpose of this task force is going to be to provide recommendations to both Dr. Noguchi and the Board of Education. These recommendations will become action items to be completed in subsequent years. We also plan to get community input, so we plan to host the minimum of three public forums. This is going to be to share the work of the framework and also get what we hope to accomplish. This is going to provide an opportunity for us to get feedback, though, and recommendations from the community as a whole. So not to borrow on the listen and learn, but in this case, it really, really will be the listen and learn, but in a different lens under equity. Our professional development's also been reduced and targeted to ensure we reach a large number of teachers and support staff in areas that support equity. Dr. Odell has met. We've identified a number of trainings, but just kind of some highlights. Restorative practices, cultural competency, implicit bias, student voice, those are just but a handful. Epic Education has created these trainings that could be provided digitally, which will greatly enhance our ability to train large number of staff members, administrators, staff members, and classified personnel. There's also going to be an end-of-the-year summary presentation, which is going to highlight the challenges, but also the accomplishments we ran into during this year and set the table for the work that lies ahead. We plan to train site-level teams to enable and empower them to closely examine their own practices as it pertains to equity. We believe it's pivotal to allow this to be at the site level, i.e. because it tends to provide a grassroots approach to that type of work. It also takes into account the individual nuances of a site. What's happening at Marshall may be slightly different than what happens at Kershen, and that's just one example. Also, there is not a shred of research that I've read that does not include the need and the call to arms to have well-trained principals and vice principals at a school site leading the work. This allows them to be able to build strong coalitions among school staff, et cetera, to also kind of drive the work and to build momentum. At the student level, and one of the things I'm truly looking forward to is we not only planning on engaging the interhigh council, but we also are looking to form what's called the Superintendent Student Council. This is going to be a group of both formal and informal leaders at a school site. Therefore, we can get a perspective that maybe, and again, interhigh council is very connected, but slightly different perspective on their views as it pertains to race and equity at their particular school site. Next steps with your feedback and recommendations, I would look to increase the existing services agreement and to begin the work that I outlined above. The total contract with Nancy and Epic will be $94,500. As a result of that, assuming to move forward after receiving your recommendations, I plan to form the task force and get moving on the work that I've outlined above. Finally, I plan on coming back to the board various times, at least at the end of the year, to kind of give you guys an update on where we're at. And again, the challenges, but also the accomplishments that I know that we're going to make. And with that, I am available for any questions that you guys may have. So I think you have your mics muted, Board President Marks.
I do have my mic muted. Okay, thank you, Mr. Herbst. And then can you bring back the screen?
Yeah, let me see. Hold on, I'm trying.
So we're going to have Dr. West, Vice President West, and then Trustee Walker, then Trustee Lopez, then Trustee Irvin, and then Trustee Newman. Okay, so starting off with Trustee West.
I'll make mine quick. First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you for this important job that you're doing by putting together, by putting together this conversation and a plan for us to go forward with this. I think it's, I can't underestimate the importance of what that, this means to this district and this community. So I just have a really quick question. How can our community members be a part of these committees and these stakeholder groups? What is the process for them to volunteer to be a part of this?
Well, volunteering, well, the task force, we're going to have a relatively limited amount of number. But I would ask them to submit, if you have somebody that's interested, they could email me directly. We're looking at probably having about 30 people on a task force, so we want to be kind of selective in terms of who's on it. I mean, you just don't want a task force to become too overwhelmingly big. I would also definitely encourage any community member to be a part of those community forums. I think that that'll be a great opportunity for them to share kind of their insight and feelings toward, where they think that issues surrounding inequity exist in our community and within our district.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Trustee West and Mr. Herbst. Trustee Walker?
I guess my question would be, I'd have to pair up with President Marks here. The question was, four years ago, where was this support when we created our Equity Committee meeting and tried to get folks to address this? And it's interesting because it ended up being eight of us in a room, maybe. But this sort of support then would have been phenomenal. And President Marks and I sat in the boardroom, which was our committee room, with little or nothing other than a piece of paper and please show up. So we certainly moved fast forward here. Because it was, it was four years ago, we were attempting to do this. And so that goes back to leadership with our superintendent and everybody else and how much ground we've covered. Hank, my only comment would be, I'm happy to see the student input. And generally, my comment on issue of certainly equity with education and how we look at biases, I have far less concern about the students than I do about the adults. Because when I watch students compared to when I grew up in the 70s in the South with a mixed-race marriage to where we are now, and I watch students and kids interact, whether it be music or sports or whatever it is, they're light years ahead of where we were. And so I'm looking for that. I'd like to certainly watch what their feedback is. But my real hope and focus is that it percolates out to the adults. Because I think that's where the real bias is that's sort of built in. And I think that's where the real work will sort of pay off long-term. Because when I look at young people today, those that are like throwing things, most of them seem so far beyond where we were 20 years ago that it's just impressive. Trustee, President Marks, we tried this.
Well, and we had great dialogue, and we did come up with some ideas. We just have a whole different leadership now than we had back then. So I believe we'll do, accomplish a lot more this time around than we did then in our district. So I agree with you, but it was, it was good to have the dialogue. And the students, I love the student input. We did have those awesome students on our committee. That was great. So I think a third of our committee was students.
I think to answer that one question, when you asked, how did you get in? I took, we took every single student who applied. And I think the one or two people that were community members, we didn't take, were not parents. And every time I've ran into either one of those individuals, I have been hammered and have never tried to create a committee again, because not choosing somebody because we chose parents and students has never stopped haunting me.
Yeah, that's right. You're right. Thank you. Okay, Trustee Lopez?
Well, first of all, thank you very much for, for starting this. Like Dr. Shalene mentioned, it's very important that we have this, that we have these conversations. I don't have a question. I have more of a recommendation. I mean, my question was, how do we, how does a community folks get in the process, right? But Dr. West is right on the money from the get-go. My, my recommendation is that we make this, however big this task force is, that we make it community-heavy. That the community or student-heavy, that they, the community and students. And, and I know that the last thing we worry about is our students. We saw the great work they'd done earlier in the, in the, in the months, speaking out around injustice, speaking out about, you know, equity, right? But we need their input to guide our, to guide our work. So I would definitely recommend that we make this community and, and student-heavy. The second recommendation is that we, we set ourselves a goal of how many people we want to see in a, from a community. How many people want to see out in community forums or hear from in community forums? So that we, that we can, we can, we can stay honest to our work, right? That we, that we did our due diligence in achieving real input. So those would be my recommendations. And I know that that, that we have someone at the helm that would make that happen, so I'm assured that that would get done. But those, those would be my, my two recommendations.
Appreciate the recommendations. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Irvin?
Yes, along those lines of Trustee Lopez, you know, making sure we have that community representation, that representative of our community as a whole. We, we, you know, we have an opportunity to do some great work. And then going back to President Marks, in terms of the difference between the other times, because we can go back to 2005, when I led as a district, led the diversity task force, which had a, had a vision of equity and all of that good stuff back in 2005. You know, again, it's one thing for the leadership to say, hey, that's a good idea, let's go with it. It's another thing for leadership to say, we support you, we're going to provide you with the resources needed to be able to make this a success. So I go back to 2005, because that's when I was selected to lead that task force. And so moving forward, I agree, we, I think the leadership is in place to be able to bring the necessary tools, experience, and resources to elevate us to the next level and not become stagnant in this process. Because it's, it's not new for us. It's just a new day now. And so how we respond right now is going to be, the community's going to be watching, because the same community members that were making these, bringing this to the forefront back then are still around. They're still, they're still looking for the change. And I say, I think change is on the horizon. And with that, I just have a question. It was a couple of questions that were given to me by community members around the equity, equity work and racial justice. And one person said, is there thought being given to how to build, to how to build capacity through this process? That so that when future needs arise, to have an organization, and also to have an organization like EPCOT, which we have, you know, involved in the facilitation process? And, and, and can we hire, they also had a question, can we hire locally and support our own community and economy in terms of when we need to look for resources in advancing this work? We have people in our community that have expressed the interest to, to share their knowledge and expertise in that, that area. And so, you know, we're, we're on the forefront again, you know, I would like to say. But I think that this is going to be a new day. I think change is, change is going to happen. I'm thinking about Sam Cooke right now, his, his, his song, "Change." And so we just have to remember that, you know, we've got to keep our students and our families at the forefront, because this is all about them. This is, this is all about them. And, and, and if we're serious about changing the paradigm and shifting it in the right direction, this is the work that can get us there, because it has with other districts, it has with other communities. It's time that we, we, we take the gauntlet and really do something with it.
So Trustee Irvin, so Trustee Irvin, I'd like to address the quest, the first question you had, which is centered to the work that really went into part of the planning, and that is, how do you build capacity so it lives past this year and lives past my superintendency? So how I framed this goal with managers was, by the time that I'm no longer the superintendent of Modesto City, I want to make sure that equity is in the fabric of what we do, and it's in the culture. So to do that, let me speak to how are we building that in? So first off, we have deep professional development this year for a lot of teachers, so that's, that's one piece to it. But at the heart of it is also building the capacity of our district-level leadership to be able to carry this on, because we don't want it to be contingent on a consultant or someone from the outside. And that's why Mr. Herbst is going to be co-facilitating and learning from Dr. And that's why Mr. Herbst is going to be co-facilitating and learning from Dr. Dome and her work, how to build those skills with him and his team. So we'll have a team of facilitators. But equally as important is the trainer-of-trainers model for our site teams. So embedded in that site work is training individuals at the different sites to be trainers themselves of the work at their sites. And then lastly, the students. If we don't get to the students, if we don't get it embedded in what they're doing and what they're saying and what they're sharing, this isn't going to work. This is all really just a bunch of activities, right? At the center of this work is empowering our students to do the work and also to be ambassadors of behaviors and also checking other students and also adults in the system. And so what we want to do with the superintendent's team, or Superintendent's Student Council, is to bring a set of informal leaders from our high school and our junior highs, to meet with myself, Mr. Herbst and his team, to listen and learn from them. But equally as important, to train them to be ambassadors, to go back out to their school site. So when we talk about building capacity, it's literally at every single level. Dr. Dome and myself and Mark and the others that were on the call about a month ago, that was at the center of really the model that we're building. And again, we start this year and we continue moving it next year as well.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you. Is that all that you had, Trustee?
Yes, yes, on that.
All right. So I just wanted to make a comment. I just appreciated your leadership when you did do the diversity training. That was awesome. I don't remember the gentleman's name that you had come out of town here. I think he was from Stockton or maybe between Stockton and the Bay Area. He was great. I still remember those meetings and they still have affected me. So thank you for that. And I know only two board members took the time to go to those trainings. So that was interesting. But I know we are in new times and new place and it's great to be here now and see where we're headed. All right, I have Trustee Newman next.
All right. Well, thank you, my full board members that have added your input. It's so valuable. And I also just want to thank the superintendent. I think that my two cents on this is with regard to the student voice, that's going to be the most important component of it. I just want to echo what Dr. Naguchi just said. And having, you know, having a high school student and having had both my sons in leadership, I could kind of speak to this uniquely. And that is that the student voice you probably need to hear from is probably not going to come from your traditional leadership classes. And I think that's important to recognize. And it's not that, it's likely the kids we need to hear from are the ones that probably aren't going to fill out the application and try and get on this, get on a committee. So it's just really important that we try and figure out a way to get that voice that we really need to hear. And it doesn't mean we should exclude leadership students, because they're going to be an important conduit to getting it out into the student body. But we have to hear from the experiences of students that we need to hear from. And likely, it may not, they may not be in that leadership classes at our high school sites. And so that's going to be, I would reach out to charge the leadership students with giving you some names of students and, hey, you should listen to these people. Because it's interesting to hear my sons talk about students that they know that are very different than them, but have a different and unique perspective and do appear to be kind of leaders on campus. So the leadership students might be a place to start, to ask them, who do you think we should talk to? I also think that it's important for our students to feel like this is a safe place, for them to say what their experiences are. I don't want any student to come away from this and feel even more alienated, even more like they can't, that we aren't listening to them. And so, and that is a possibility. So with, you know, balancing the adults in the room with the students in the room and making sure that that student voice is heard. And so it needs to be a safe place for them. I do think that having maybe some teachers involved is important, because we need their buy-in on this. In terms of parents versus community members, because again, I really want to hear from the students. Because I do believe our students, as Trustee Walker pointed out, our students have very different views on this than even, you know, we do. And certainly people even older than those of us sitting on the board. And so we need to make sure that voice is heard. So I think that in terms of parents versus community members, I'd like to see more parents, because I think that, you know, maybe their children have shared things over the years that have happened to them and they know some personal experiences. Parents are really hard to get involved. They probably already feel disenfranchised and this is a difficult time to hear from them. And so we need to have a mechanism for parents to send in a confidential comment or experience and share an experience for them to at least be a part of it and provide us some effective input. And again, it needs to be, all of this has to be, for me, it's very important, it has to be a safe place for anybody to share their views and to feel safe in sharing those views. So that's my two cents. I know you needed some feedback on how to go forward with this. I'm very excited. I think this is an important step. We're at a unique time in our history that we need to do this. And it's imperative. And so it's worth the time and the attention that we need to spend on this in the midst of a pandemic. It's when it needs to happen. So thank you for taking, thank you for making it a priority.
Yes, it is. Thank you for all the comments. Those are great comments. Yes, thank you. Thank you, board, and for all your experiences that you've added into this time. I also, I want to ask Ms. Noonan, I do believe we have some comments to be read at this time. So please read the comments from the board.
Sure. You got it. So these are the comments that we received on Item B4. The first one comes from Tamara McCarthy, and Tamara is from Enox High School. She's an English instructor as well as their yearbook advisor. She actually has some questions on Item B4. So perhaps Mr. Herbst, if you'd like to maybe get back to her after this. But what are your priorities in addressing the impact of the three pandemics? And in parentheses, racial justice, COVID-19 and the economy with our students? What is the specific plan for doing that? Second question is, what is the desired outcome for designing the equity and racial justice framework? What do you hope to achieve? Third question is, who is driving this equity work? Is it EPIC? Is it the task force? Is it the community? And the fourth question is, who is on the task force? What is the representation? Is it community members, administrators, parents, students, teachers? And what will they be working to accomplish? So that's the first comment that we have. Then we have another comment from Elizabeth Duptle. And Elizabeth, I hope I've pronounced her last name correctly. She's a second-grade teacher from Muir Elementary School. And her comment is, I would like to encourage the board to support the MCS administration in their efforts to create a more equitable district by utilizing a framework, professional development, curriculum and a task force. The next comment we have is, it's actually from Wendy Byrd. Wendy is the president of the Modesto Stanislas NAACP. She actually has a comment both on B4 and B5, but it's naturally separated. So I'm just going to read her comment right now on Item B4 and then I'll, once you get to B5, I'll read that one. So her comment is, I applaud MCS for taking a stance on a long overdue initiative of institutionalizing equity and racial justice within its framework. I hope that this will occur not only in terms of curriculum, but also in terms of hiring practices, policies and procedures across the board. We need strong measures in place to ensure equity and diversity among teachers, administrators and support staff. And the last comment that we have, this comment actually applies to both. And it's both Item B4 and B5 that you've yet to read. But it applies to both, so I want to make sure that I get that on the record. So this is from Elizabeth Garman, and she is both a parent and a teacher here at Modesto City Schools. Her comment is, good day. My name is Elizabeth Garman. I'm a parent and teacher of MCS and I am in support of Item B4 and B5. The proposed framework and ethnic studies adoption is one thing of many things to be accomplished in order to educate ourselves and our community and make a more just and better world for all. Sincere regards, Elizabeth Garman. And it looks like those are all the comments that we have on Item B4. And like I said, her comment also applied to Item B5. But I will have more comments on B5 once you get to that portion.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Noonan, for that. I have a comment from Trustee Brown. Is that correct? You need to unmute. Thank you.
So I think it's interesting that we've had numerous board meetings with very little public comment. And the fact that we have multiple comments on this issue stresses the importance. It would be very easy for our district to focus strictly on distance learning right now. But I am grateful that our district has taken a stance to address this much-needed social attention to an issue that our nation is facing. So I applaud and thank our district for moving forward at this time, when it would be easy to push any other issues aside, because we have so many other things to work on. So thank you to all that are putting the emphasis where it needs to be.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Brown. And that concludes Item B4 on the draft of the Equity and Racial Justice Framework. And now, oh man, this was fine. Hang on just a moment. I think I'm okay now. Okay. It just hits us. I think the air conditioner in here gets us with pollen every so often and two of us in here get our eyes all watery. All right, next item, B5, Approval of Adoption of Resolution Number 2021-02, Affirming Support of AB2-2016 California Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum Draft in Support of Save California Ethnic Studies Initiative. Mr. Herbst?
Me again, yeah. Good evening. Tonight, we bring forward a resolution that supports AB2016 California Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum Draft. Ethnic Studies is a critical and interdisciplinary study of race and ethnicity with a focus on the experiences and perspectives of people of color within the United States. Since the 1960s, scholars have analyzed the ways in which race and ethnicity continue to be powerful, social, cultural and political forces impacting access to opportunities. We applaud the support and support the efforts that's being done by the California Department of Education to ensure curriculum for the Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum includes fair representation of marginalized groups and those who are facing increased challenges in the current global climate, and then wanting to bring this education into our secondary classrooms. It's recommended that the Board of Education adopt the resolution of forming support of AB2016 California Ethnic Model Schools Draft. And I will, happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, so I have, Trustee Irvin has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Irvin, don't you dare, you know, I know you know this stuff inside and out.
No, I just wanted to, you know, just to comment. Like I said, I've been working with a statewide group, an ethnic study and Defense of Ethnic Studies, who actually brought this bill to the state. And there's over 124 organizations and schools who have supported this Model Curriculum Draft. And I'm glad we were able to bring it forth to our board here and Modesto City Schools, because it's, Ethnic Studies, I think, will go a long way with having students really understand other cultures, the racial groups that make up our community. Again, I'm going to go back 10, 12 years. I tried to bring it to Modesto High School, the Ethnic Studies Course at Modesto Junior College, set up a partnership with the college to have the class taught on campus there and they would receive college credit. And things kind of, you know, got derailed again in that process. And I just think that, you know, this is a really good way for us to really solidify our equity work and complementing it with ethnic studies. And hopefully, we can get it as part of the graduation requirement in the future, very near future. Like I said, I taught ethnic studies at MJC for a number of years, the same class I tried to bring to Modesto High School for our students and Modesto City Schools. And I couldn't even get past unless seeing what the interests of the students, going back to Trustee Newman, is letting the students decide if it's a class they would take and doing a survey of those students and say, if this class was offered, would you enroll and take the class? And so I'm glad we're here again. I'm glad the leadership is in place that can move this forward. Mark has gotten a really good response from the community, from folks that I've talked to, that really think that he is going to be the one to help to lead this forward with our superintendent umbrella. So I'm looking forward to seeing what kind of progress we make. And I think we're going in the right direction with this. Because we got many students who go to our campuses, our diverse campuses. And sometimes, when I was on Modesto High for a year over there, you know, you saw the groups of students. You always see the different groups of students, whether they're broken up by culture, by race, you know, on the campus there. And then you had your butterfly students, that they can woof in and out of the different groups themselves. But they were the, there wasn't the exception rather than the rule. And so, and I think that ethnic studies will help bridge that gap on campus where more students will cross, you know, cross over to different cultural and racial groups on campus and rather than see the pockets of students. You know, it was almost that you saw all the students together when it was a ballgame and things like that. When it was on campus, you can just walk campus, I always observed that, there are different groups of students. And so I think this would help bridge that divide and be more homogeneous on our campuses. So I'm really excited about this work. And there's another bill for the CSUs as well. The CSUs are trying to make it a graduation requirement within the CSU system as well. And so they have an equal bill going before the legislature to do the same. So it'd be nice to be able to have it go from, you know, high school, I've had ethnic studies, you get to college, you got ethnic studies and, you know, and move forward. That's all I have. Sorry to be so verbose.
That was great. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Love Modesto High. That was so great. Love hearing all that. I remembered it, because I wanted my students to go there, because I was a guest speaker into the high schools one, long time ago. And so when my boys were getting the age for high school, I wasn't in Modesto High District, but I wanted them to go there, because I said, to me, at the time in 2000, well, in the late 90s, that was the best high school in Modesto with the diversity. It had the most diversity. And so I loved it. And the students were just phenomenal. So I was really happy to see that. Now this whole city is very diverse, but Modesto High at that time was the really diverse high school. All right, Trustee Walker.
Oh, Trustee Walker, okay. I agree mostly with what's, Irvin. I think what's interesting when I look at this is that, because I've got two students who have now, one's graduated and one's a senior. And when I compare what they know about sort of ethnic studies, I had more by the time I got to high school 40 years ago in Georgia than they've ever gotten. And I just find that interesting, just troubling too. But it was interesting, because 40 some odd years ago, when you had different ethnic events going on, it was infused in everything you were doing. Black History Month wasn't a stand-up and say, hey, you did book reports, you know, you knew all these different people. And Harriet Tubman wasn't something that you saw in a movie. And it really was embedded within the culture, which I find interesting because I grew up in Georgia and we get a lot of grief on these issues. But in all reality, it was much more infused. Um, and then to Trustee Irvin's point about colleges, one of the college courses I had to take was a diversity course. It wasn't labeled that, but I spent an entire semester studying Hispanic culture in California. And so that was there. I, what I'm mostly concerned about here is that we go slow to go fast. And I think I've talked to Dr. Noguchi about this, is that we take an incremental approach and really try to build something that is righteous and good and has the depth of the coverage. And I think doing it the way we're talking about it makes sense. And here's the red flag I'll raise. Every single time the legislature in California for the last decade has ginned up a new set of standards or frameworks and then pushed them out, it's been a train wreck. When they push out early curriculum materials, see Engage New York. I mean, see Eureka. I mean, it's just not been well thought out. And so I think to Trustee Irvin's point, get this right and really take the time to work through the process and get something that is solid and fundamental and not necessarily take our lead from the political monkey business in Sacramento. Because I think for the most part, they have misled and given misinformation over a very long period, certainly for the last decade. And I have far more faith in Mr. Herbst, Dr. Noguchi, Ms. Hinkle, Ms. Odell, Dr. Odell now, to get it right, go slow, go fast, get this right. And I still find it extraordinarily interesting that forty years after I left high school, my kids get less of it in California than I had by eighth grade in Georgia. But keep up the good work and go slow to go fast, please.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Walker. Trustee Lopez. Oh, you're muted, Trustee Lopez. There you go. That's all right. That's good. I was like, wait, he's talking. Okay, go ahead.
I was very inspired. I wanted, uh, I just went straight to it. But no, I, I really appreciate that, that we're taking the steps on the, on the previous item. And the one that we're taking today, I think is, is vital. I know that, um, um, Trustee Irvin, like the great work that he's done. Um, I mean, I saw some of that in, in high school myself. And I, and I think more than, more than learning about other, other ethnicities is the importance of seeing your ethnicity. Well, I was going to say in textbook, but those are going to fade away really soon. So seeing themselves in, in the curriculum, I, I think is very important for the, um, for the growth of a, of a, of a human being, of being represented, not only in your neighborhood, but being represented in, in, in our education system. And you see that with our teachers, you see that in our, um, in our staff. But you, it, it's amazing that we're not going to get to see that in our, in our curriculum. So, um, definitely appreciated the work. And I know that, uh, Mr. Herbst and Dr. Noguchi are the right people to, to lead on this work. Um, and we'll, we'll, we'll be right here to support.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. I hear you chirping in the background. I think it's the fire alarm. Mine chirped la- last week. So I was like, I didn't even have to fix that. So that's great. It's good to see you. I love what you said, Adolfo. That was really good. And, and we're looking forward to this. So I have one question. On the last paragraph on the first page was, did we, did we edit this or not? Because when I had it, it says, be it further resolved that the Board of Education affirm support for Pacific Islander Studies, Arab American Studies, Central American Studies, and West Asian American Studies and their continued inclusion in the ESMC curriculum. So it did not mention African American or, um, that. So I was wondering, is that because it's assumed that it's in there already? Because it is nowhere in this. So help me out here. Somebody let me know. Is this supposed to be added?
Thank it. I, I actually think I got the answer. John, you can correct me if I'm wrong. The, 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 this, the, the, the bill went, went through in a, a, a number of years ago.
Yeah, twenty sixteen.
Yeah, there's been some work that, um, that has been done, including public comment. And right now, kind of one of the things that's being held up is kind of a debate between a handful of the minorities, three of which that you just mentioned, that were not included in the original draft. So this is affirming the support of those. I, I, African American, other, other, uh, uh, ethnicities are included. And Dr. Irvin, please feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I had done some research on this over the weekend, just to make sure I could address that question.
No, that's, that's exactly why. It wasn't in the original model curriculum.
Correct. Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Okay. So they're adding it to it because I, I thought, here we go through all of this. We don't have African American in here. So, all right. Okay. I just want to make sure because I asked that on Thursday and was, was like, wait, this is missing in here. So, okay. Um, thank you very much. Now we are ready for comments from the public. Ms. Noonan.
Okay. And there are, there are quite a few on this item, so I will, uh, try to be as clear as possible. Um, so the first comment comes from Wendy Byrd, again, the president of the Modesto Stanislas NAACP. And Wendy says, I support the resolution affirming AB 2016 California Ethnic Studies Model Curriculum Draft. As we move toward 21st century preparedness, history has taught us that race does matter. Our country was built off of multiple frameworks designed to promote racial disparities. In order to correct that, schools must be intentional about charting a new course that prepares students for a multiracial society. Ethnic Studies is a perfect tool for building bridges between cultures. Students will become more enthusiastic about learning with a more in-depth culturally-based curriculum. Relationship building, problem solving, and getting along is just as important in life as science and math. The massive protests all over the world following the George Floyd murder was testimony of an outcry for change. Systemic racism is not just about police brutality, it is also about structural racism in education. In order to move forward, we have to be intentional about changing the flow of information in, in order to serve the better good. Again, hats off to transformational and new thought leaders like Dr. Noguchi, staff, and teachers who see this vision. Thank you, Wendy Byrd. Okay. Um, the next comment comes from Magdalene Strong. And she says, hello there. I wanted to profess my support for making Ethnic Studies a part of Modesto City Schools curriculum in regards to item B five on your agenda for today's meeting. I think, I think Ethnic Studies would be an invaluable addition to the curriculum, focusing on the experiences and perspectives of people of color in U.S. history is so critical for our young people and for society at large. This is truly a crucial move by Modesto City Schools and would indeed demonstrate a commitment to inclusion and a celebration of diversity. Thank you, Magdalene Strong. The next comment comes from Miranda Bakas. And she's a Modesto resident and alumni of MCS. Uh, to whom it may concern, I think that it is vital to implement Ethnic Studies into curriculum for several reasons. First, it provides a mirror for children that are often not with, uh, within books or curriculum to see themselves. Second, it provides a window for children that often see themselves within books and curriculum to see people that are different from them. Lastly, teaching accurate history will push our country to acknowledge the sacrifices and contributions that, and then she uses an acronym, B-I-P-O-C, have made to our country. Please strongly consider including Ethnic Studies in your district. It will benefit future generations and our society as a whole. Sincerely, Miranda Bakas. And then we have Cynthia Robles. And Cynthia says, hello, I am emailing to show my support for making Ethnic Studies a part of the school curriculum. In light of recent events, this will help our students understand important issues that impact their community. Too many times, students in the Central Valley are left behind, and with Ethnic Studies, it will empower them. Thank you, Cynthia Robles. And then we have a comment from Rose Mitchell. And Rose says, dear superintendent, please be advised that I fully support Ethnic Studies program being adopted into the curriculum in middle and high schools within the MCS system. It is important that true facts of all ethnic cultures be known to students and taught by unbiased educators. Then we have one more. Let's see. Oops. Hang on. Sorry. I lost my... Oh, here we go. Um, I didn't lose my place. We had another comment from Elizabeth, Elizabeth Guptel, again, second grade teacher from Muir Elementary School. And she's also a parent of high school students and member of the MTA Equity Team. And Elizabeth says, it is critical that MCS approve a resolution that supports AB 2016, which requires the offering of Ethnic Studies at the high school level. The board needs to move forward in offering an Ethnic Studies course. The next comment, we're, we're almost there. The next comment is from Pari Robison, who is a Modesto resident. They say, my name is Pari Robison. I was born and raised in Modesto. I fully support implementing Ethnic Studies into regular school curriculum. It is extremely important and necessary to reach our children the correct history so that we can all have a better understanding of one another. And I think they may have said to teach our children the correct history, um, but I'm just reading it as it came over. Um, the next comment is from Pam Robison, uh, who is an educator. And they say, I'm emailing you in support of making Ethnic Studies a requirement in regular school curriculum. I taught in Modesto for thirty-plus years, and it is crucial to implement Ethnic Studies into regular curriculum so children can have a better understanding of who they are and their peers around them. Thank you, Pam Robison. Then we have a comment from Dottie Lobu. And Dottie says, to whom it may concern, I would like to express my support for Ethnic Studies becoming a part of the Modesto City School curriculum. This would give students the opportunity to learn in a new capacity about themselves and each other, as well as resulting in fostering them to become well-rounded, educated, and compassionate citizens. Ethnic Studies has always been and will always continue to be relevant to students' lives. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Dottie Lobu. And then we have Gabriela Fierro, and she's a Modesto resident. And she says, I deeply appreciate the opportunity to voice my belief that required Ethnic Studies in Modesto City Schools is critically important. My black and brown children deserve to experience the same ownership, pride, and engagement of their education that comes from being represented and seeing themselves in the curriculum. It speaks volumes about our community that Ethnic Studies is being, in quotes, considered in 2020. This is simply a part of education if there is no agenda to admit it. The education that is presented in public school forms, the bo- forms the belief of a community, what better way to grow a more cohesive community than to teach children about each other? It is time for Modesto to be an anti-racist leader for the broader community. My youngest son has been raised in Modesto. When I approached his teacher about recognizing Black History Month, the res- the response I received was that this was not part of the curriculum. Recognizing my son was not part of the school year. I'm excited to see Modesto City Schools pave the way for Stanislas County. Sincerely, Gabriela, Gabriela Fierro, Modesto resident. And the last comment for item B five is from Ariana Soto Zuniga. And Ariana says, hello, I am emailing in regards to making Ethnic Studies part of the curriculum. I believe this would be very helpful to students and teachers since it goes hand in hand with culturally sustaining pedagogy. Students do not get exposed to history and literary works that reflect their identity. I understand this is a new step and it will not be perfect at first. However, adding this class into the curriculum will allow for an additional space for students to participate in dialogue and also serve as a new frontier for co-teaching between the teacher and student. Thank you. Sincerely, Ariana Soto Zuniga. And that is all of the comments that I have for, uh, in addition to the one I read earlier from, uh, Elizabeth Garmin, the combo. So that's everything I have. Thanks for your patience.
No worries. Thank you. And thank you to the public who commented on their support of this, and we appreciate that. So now we are ready to take a motion and a second to approve this unless there's any other comments. I don't see any hands up. So, all right. Ready? Yes. Trustee Irvin, thank you very much. Second by?
Second.
Trustee Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye, aye.
Right. I don't see all the mics on. Any opposed? I don't see any opposed. All right. So, thank you, uh, trustees. And now I have the next item was, are there any items to be placed on future Board of Agenda? I do not see any and we did not receive any, so I will entertain a motion to close the meeting. Trustee Chad, uh, Trustee Brown, Trustee Walker, second sit. All those in favor, aye. Thank you very much. Great meeting, you guys. I know it went longer than we were hoping and, and I'm gonna blame, um, the.